Jen, to discuss personnel issues. We were discussing tenure recommendations as we do every year. So we've already done our Pledge of Allegiance and our roll call. So I'd like us to just move right into our moment of silence. This is just a moment for us to reflect and to commemorate the COVID-19 pandemic anniversary, to take a moment to consider all the people we have lost and the challenges that we've all faced and the successes as well that we've all had. Thank you very much. Our next Board of Education meeting will be held on March 23rd at 8:00 PM. This is a recently added meeting. There will be a 7 o'clock community budget forum prior to this meeting that Dr. Benante will be leading the community through our budget status. And I'm sure there'll be outreach to the community about that soon after this meeting. And then the Board will convene at 8:00 PM after that community meeting, the community webinar. And we'll also be doing it via Zoom. So the community, if they'd like to, could just then continue on into a public meeting if they wanted to address any questions or listen to the Board's deliberation about basically what Dr. Benante just talked about. So our March 23rd meeting will be happening virtually on Zoom. It will not be happening here, and it will be happening at 8:00 PM after the community webinar about the budget. I'd also like to take a moment to remind anybody who is interested that we have two Board of Education trustee seats up for election this year. To receive a packet of information, which is required, you can stop in the district office and pick one up, or you could email Kathryn Platt, our district clerk, to have her send you one electronically, and that's cplatt@haldaneschool.org. And I'll speak on behalf of my colleagues that if anybody is interested in running for Board and has questions about the roles and responsibilities, any one of us would be very happy to share with you what we do and answer any questions that you may have. Okay, I will turn it over to Dr. Benante for our COVID update.
Thank you, Jen. I just wanted to again echo your remarks and the importance of just taking the space to reflect on where we've been over the course of the past year as it relates to our management of the pandemic. And it's hard to believe that it was one year ago. I know I was meeting with my administrative team, I believe it was March 13th, it was a Friday, and we were pretty sure we weren't going to be in school that next week and potentially for two weeks, but we thought we'd be back. That worst-case scenario, we'd be back in a couple of weeks and right back at it. And as we all know, that didn't quite happen. There was a lot of, there was loss that we experienced along the way. Many families within our community who were impacted in some way, shape, or form and continue to be. And has totally caused us to reevaluate how we approach our work and how we facilitate the management of our local public school. But I appreciate the notion that there's been a lot of success along the way as well. And I think we've found ourselves in the fortunate position where we've been able to provide a quality experience to our students, certainly since the start of this school year. We did our best to manage the end of last school year, but from the start of this school year through today, I feel that our Haldane students and families have had an education that's largely consistent with what they would have experienced pre-COVID. And I'm encouraged, as a point of transition tonight, to share with you our plan to bring our remaining students who are not able to attend school five days a week back onto campus, which is most notably our high school students, or the beginnings of a framework for that plan as we bridge this last, what I hope to be this last transition for our kids this school year. So I'm just, I just have a few slides just to help me stay organized. And as I, just excuse my back, John, and we'll go from here. So this week, tomorrow, we're going to reconvene the School Reopening Task Force to consider how we can further bring our high school students back five days a week as opposed to the current hybrid schedule that they're on. And we're also going to charge the task force with considering how really all K-12 spaces could be further accommodated to address health and safety needs that may present not just this year but in next year, because I think we realize that we're still going to be in a COVID-related environment in some way, shape, or form, certainly into next school year. So as you're, just to speak to this briefly, you know that the, our model really relies upon students being six feet apart. But there is some new research that's coming out that suggests that less distancing, in particular distancing at the three-feet level, may still be viable as a means of separating students in the classroom. The benefit at Haldane is our class sizes are low, so it allows us to honor six-foot distancing to a significant extent. However, we likely will encounter sections or classes like we do at the high school where we may be over the number of students we can accommodate in a classroom and still maintain six-foot distancing. So that's, that's the dynamic that really is influencing these types of conversations. And there is some guidance on how to handle such that we'll discuss with the Reopening Task Force. Some other factors that we just want to consider along the way are community transmission rates and at what point should, if we experience a scenario like we did in January where community transmission rates were relatively high, that being a point to pause and to have a conversation around what we should be doing and how we should potentially change the model for how students are coming into and out of school each day. So maybe transitioning to a hybrid model for shorter periods of time while transmission rates are high. And these are conversations that we've had in the past, but looking to now formalize that in terms of guidance for the school district moving forward. Because I would hope, I think we've learned a lot over this last year, and we want to make sure we're applying what we've learned to whatever situation we may encounter in the future. Our staff is now largely vaccinated, those who want to be. And we're, a couple appointments to finish up there, but we're in a good place with that, and I think that's a factor that needs to be considered in the prospect of bringing more students back onto campus. We also want to be mindful, there's some guidance around the type of activity that's occurring within a classroom and how that should influence distancing requirements and other mitigation factors that are, that the district may seek to take place. So for example, students singing in a room is very different than students passively sitting and maybe being a part of a lecture. And I think we understand this. This is airflow and the manner in how students are speaking to one another, engaging with one another, is really significant in considering how the virus can spread in a school environment. And other mitigation strategies I point to is that New York Times had a great visualization just a week or two ago about how airflow in a traditional classroom occurs and what steps a district could take to further mitigate or increase airflow circulation and mitigate the spread of virus in a classroom environment, which did include an air filtration unit. So we're actually going to use that as a basis to have a conversation with our staff and consider what the impact would be or what the needs very well may be for us as we plan for the future. We surveyed our families last week, actually, we got the results last week, so I think just the week prior, just to get a sense for the remainder of the third quarter, because we're at the halfway point, how many students were going to remain all remote or how many families wished for their kids to remain all remote and how many families were wishing for their kids to be in person or in the current hybrid model at the high school? And these are the results. So as you can see, at the elementary and middle school levels relative to the high school, the majority of students accessing the all-in option. And at the high school level, we still have a significant number of students as compared to the beginning of the year who are opting to remain remote for this period of time. We would like to see more of these students transition back into the hybrid or all-in model if we're able to design one between now and the fourth quarter.
Can I ask a question? Do we know if the, what makeup of the 80 high school students, does it have any impact? Is there any influence of athletics?
Yes.
In that group so that kids are staying home?
Yeah.
So that they don't?
They don't want to quarantine.
They don't want to quarantine.
And I think it really comes down to that, and a number of our high school students have had to quarantine at some point over the last year. And I think that there's an inconvenience, whether it be perceived or real, that comes with that. And it's easier to remain at home than it is to come into school and potentially find yourself in a situation where you're getting a call from us and you have to quarantine for the next 10 days. I also do have heard, and in speaking with Julia, Julia's heard this as well, that there's a social influence as well. If all of your friends are home, there's a desire for you to, that one may have to stay at home as well because everybody's doing it. So why do I have to go to school if all my friends are home? No, no, everybody is home. But I think that one's social network is also influencing this. But with that, as students, more students come in, we would expect the network, if you will, to come back in as well. So we need to help our stu, work with our student body, our student body leadership to help bridge this transition between now and the end of the year. Because I do think that realistically, 90 to 95% of our high school students were in in September. Nothing that dramatic has happened between then and now to, other than, again, in the winter months, we did have obviously increased levels of community transmission, but I think we're coming out of that. The warmer weather's coming around. I do think our students' desire to be in school with their friends and the prospect of potentially them all being in is a good one for our students and for us. It looked like there may have been a question. Nope, I'm sorry. Okay. Good there? So just a few areas that we have to be mindful of. The potential for additional PPE, the influence on classroom layouts, and making sure that if we're altering the model that we've gone forward with at the beginning of the school year, that we're communicating that to families. If it does include reduced distancing, that we're being really upfront with our families about that. But also the other mitigation strategies that we're putting into place to offset the potential for any spread of virus in the school. We will have our outdoor classroom area set up again in the spring. I think that's, that was very beneficial in the fall. That's only going to help us in the spring again, so we're in the process of setting those spaces up. Air filtration is something that we're looking at, whether that be the enhancements to the regular filtration system that runs at the high school or the inclusion of additional filtration units in the classroom that sit as standalone units as opposed to be something that's roughed into the, to the school's ventilation system. Transportation needs, there may be some impact on that that we have to consider. And then also how we facilitate cafeteria and lunch and some of those other periods of the day that aren't necessarily thought of right away, but could present some logistical challenges for us were we to have more students on campus. So we're designing this in three phases. In the first phase, we consider ourselves in right around now, or starting next week to the start of the fourth quarter, which would be a planning phase. Now, within this, we do feel that we are ready to invite all of our seniors back into school. Class sizes are low enough where we can still maintain six-foot distancing by bringing the entirety of our senior class back onto campus. So we would like to start that on Monday, and that's something that we've communicated to those students and their families. We can't bring our entire student body back five days a week, but we did take some liberties there and prioritize our seniors, especially out of consideration that our seniors' last school year really weren't able to enjoy a regular, traditional end to the school year, which is filled with a lot of fun activities for them. So we want to work and be diligent about trying to provide this year's senior class with those experiences to the extent that we can safely do so. And that starts with inviting them back to school full-time. So we'd like to do that, starting on Monday, while we plan for the inclusion of our ninth, 10th, and 11th grade classes to come back full-time in the next few weeks. So again, we'll use this as a transitional period for that planning between now and the start of the fourth quarter. And then Phase Two would be the fourth quarter till the middle of the fourth quarter, so about a five-week period here, where we plan to incorporate our ninth through 11th grade students back onto campus with those accommodations. And accommodations to be determined now over the next few weeks. And obviously, that gives us time to communicate such to their families and answer any questions that they may have through that transitional period.
How does the bus work? It says it's seating, allows seating closer than six feet. Is that?
Correct.
Is that's what the state rule is now, the Department of Health?
Correct. Correct. So the Department of Health guidance, really for buses and for classrooms, indicates that wherever you cannot be six feet apart, you must be masked. So we've always been allowed to have students closer together than six feet. It is recommended that we keep students six feet apart to the extent that we can. However, if you need to operate your school, or if you need to bring them, have them closer together in order to operate your school or to make school more available to them, they must be masked if they're within six feet. So technically, us and every district that I know implemented a higher standard by way of having students sit six feet apart and mask. That was not required by Department of Health regulations, but I think that was the right choice, and that's something that we're going to continue to do to the extent that we can do it. But if we want to bring all of our kids back, we have to have them be prepared to be closer together on the bus and in their classrooms. Now, we've talked with our team, and we're going to speak to the Reopening Task Force about this. The last five weeks of the school year, we'd like to make a concerted effort to directly connect with any family who has opted to have their child still be in an all-remote environment to see if there's some way we can have those students join us on campus for the last five weeks of the school year. And we realize that there's individual family circumstances that may be driving this. Maybe there's someone who's immunocompromised in the home. We totally understand that. And by way of that, we may not indeed be able to have those students in our school, but we at least want to make the point of connection and have a conversation with those families to see if it's at all possible. We think this is not only an important part of concluding this school year altogether, but also the prospect of starting next school year and making that transition for those students more manageable. We think from an educational perspective and from a social, emotional perspective, it would be best if we could try to transition, have students transition back on the campus towards the end of this school year and not having such a significant gap perhaps from when they were last on campus to the fall. If you consider that, last March to next, or to the upcoming September, that will have been a year and a half for, almost a year and a half for some of our kids. And that's a long time to be out of a formalized school environment. So we'd like to use the last five weeks of the school year as a point of transition. Again, if families would wish to entertain that with us. If not, obviously, we'll continue to accommodate those families through remote instruction, but we do want to leverage that, seeing it as a time when, again, community rate of infection hopefully is very low at that point. We're maximizing the use of our outdoor space typically mid-May through June, or at least we would envision such. And similar to what we said in the fall, it's likely to be the safest time that one can be in school as compared to other points in the school year, given what we know now. That's it. So just a brief update tonight on our next steps there. And again, we'll be meeting with the School Reopening Group tomorrow to start the process.
Can I just, first of all, I'd love the proactive reach-out approach to the remote families. I think that's really.
Thanks.
That makes so much sense, and it's really caring and compassionate about trying to just like open-arm everyone back.
Yeah, that's the goal.
I mean, I think that's fantastic. My question is, do we have a sense of how much money this is going to cost? So we're bringing people back, there's more PPE, there's barriers, there's other accommodations that may or may not need to be made. Is there a sense of how expensive that's going to be, where that money's coming from?
I think, not yet, but that's something you're going to hear from me and likely Tim in some way, shape, or form in the coming weeks. And what we want to define is what is the, specifically what is the PPE or what are the additional space accommodations that need to be made, because the prices vary dramatically. So just to give you an example, something that a lot of districts are pursuing, so to, back to Margaret's question, in a classroom environment, the state regulations state that if you're less than three feet, you must be masked and, I left this part out, there must be some sort of barrier between you and whoever you're close to. So what a lot of districts are doing is they're pursuing the purchase of these desktop barriers that sit on top of the desk and almost makes it a cubby, if you will, as a means of creating separation between you and the student who's sitting in front of you, sort of, and the student who's sitting alongside of you. Now, if you go back to that New York Times model that I referenced, and if you speak to the Department of Health, and if you speak to Dr. Corsaro, just someone who's really immersed himself in this, it is, I think, becoming well-known and established that those barriers are not effective in spreading, in reducing the spread of a airborne virus. The barrier doesn't help that much. Masks out, and double masks even better, but the state regulations still establish there must be barrier. So some, what some, and the cost of those are very expensive. You know, they can run north of $100 per desktop, some are hundreds of dollars per desktop. Yet, if you speak to the Department of Health and Dr. Corsaro, they will say a face shield is actually more effective if needed. And if you recall, if you go to the hospital, what is someone wearing? They're wearing a mask and they're wearing a face shield. That that's actually more effective than putting the barriers up. So some districts are getting guidance from the Department of Health and approval from the Department of Health to pursue that option if you have to, if and when you have to put students closer than six feet together. And that's much more affordable. The cost of a face shield is rather insignificant as compared to one of those barriers. We, well, we need to sit with that and work with it for a couple of weeks to determine what's going to be right for Haldane. We want our staff to feel comfortable, and we want our students to feel comfortable, and our families to feel comfortable. So, you know, this is the time now to get into that conversation and determine what the appropriate accommodations are. One last thing is just the HEPA filter units, which are helpful. Those can be pricey, but the benefit of being small, we don't have, they run typically about $300 to $400 for a unit for classrooms, roughly the size of our classrooms here. So if you think about our high school in the short term, there's about 20 spaces there that we would need to accommodate. However, we want to be mindful that we may need to do this in other sections or other classes next year. So it's not going to be cost prohibitive, but there will be a cost.
Right, and I could see a HEPA filter being something that we continue to use even post-pandemic as good practice.
Yes.
The plastic barriers, I mean, what are they going to be used for? Post-it notes? It's like.
Right. We'll have a closet of them somewhere post-pandemic.
Right.
And that's what we want to be really mindful of, because those, some districts have run up costs of tens of thousands, bigger the district, hundreds of thousands of dollars for desktop barriers that we, you know, we may not have any use for. Hopefully, we'll have any use for in short time.
I know that our interventionists at the elementary school level will be busy so long as there is at least one child remote. But I was curious to know, you know, if and when students do return, do they, how are they deployed? I know before there was a plan for administrative duties or extra in-class support.
Yeah, we'll certainly make good use of them. And when it comes to intervention, we always could be, and I like how we titled our interventionists, because even if all of our all-remote students come back, there's still a level of additional intervention support that we could be providing to our elementary students, whether it be through math support or ELA support. So I don't think we'll have any problem coordinating how to best utilize them, whether it be through the traditional academic intervention model, providing a level of additional support through our co-taught classrooms for our special education students. Yeah, we, we won't have any problem there.
I just have a quick question. You mentioned community transmission rates earlier. To date, community transmission, am I thinking this correctly? Community transmission rates have not had an impact on any Putnam schools. There's been no, the community is at X, therefore the school has an implication. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
It was heading in that direction.
Yeah, no, I thought we were there.
You referenced the metrics back in November and, but yet, the state seemed to forego after, it happened elsewhere in the state.
Okay.
But it did not happen in Putnam.
Right, right.
And the state seemed to abandon that model.
Okay.
As a basis of restricting school activity right around, almost as soon as they started implementing it. So, yeah. However, the, just to, to your point, the CDC's recent guidance has suggested, and has a matrix, for helping local communities guide their decision-making process for when considering when community transmission reaches a certain threshold, that should prompt us to consider whether or not we should be limiting activity within the school. So, Doc, process, that makes sense to me. If and when we were to see our community numbers cross these thresholds, that may, that may necessitate a conversation and a decision to further restrict activity in our schools, maybe shifting to a hybrid model because we want to reduce student population in the school. So there are some metrics out there that we could use as a basis of that, that were similar to what the state had tried to institute, but just backed off from.
And that would be a district-based decision rather than the state?
Correct. Correct, as of now, unless the Department of Health were to adopt it as rule.
Okay, great.
And as graduation starts to be planned, and I know that it's so far out and things could change completely.
It's not that far, but yeah.
Completely between now and then, I would love to see some kind of shout-out to the class of 2020.
Oh, that's a good point. I'll make sure I speak to Julia about that. I'm sure she's watching, and we'll see if there's something we can do there.
Something.
Before we move on, can I just ask Doug if he had anything he wanted to share about the impending return of the senior class?
Yeah, I think I speak on behalf of most, if not all, seniors that it's very exciting that we're going to be back in school full-time. You know, outside of the seniors that will be at home or will be doing like full-day BOSI's programs and things such as that. But for the students that are going to be in-person in class, it's definitely exciting.
Yeah.
And I know some, like, one class that I have is like the one class that might have too many people. And there are, there is going to be some sort of coordination where we'll have students in other classes logging in, like other classrooms logging in, or something along those lines. But regardless, it's definitely a very happy, very happy thought to finally be back in school full-time.
Great, great. Okay, so I think we can move on to, Dr. Seokki is doing a middle school report for us. So we'll turn the floor to her. I'm going to move over a little bit here.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very excited to highlight the middle school for you tonight. There's a lot to be proud of under normal circumstances and then especially under global pandemic circumstances. It just highlights that all the more. So this is an introduction and overview of the pedagogical philosophy guiding Haldane middle-level instruction. Team teaching is at the heart of middle-level pedagogy, and it allows for interdisciplinary approach, approaches to teaching, the New York State standards. And our small class sizes at Haldane lend themselves to authentic, student-centered learning experiences. The image you see on, on the board here is from Ms. PC's seventh-grade class, ELA class. She had her students write short stories, so their, their stories written for students by students. And during independent reading time, students are encouraged to read each other's stories. So the middle school's goals mirrored the district's goals for the first, and the first of those. of those being continuity of instruction, which you've heard a lot about. So, Haldane Middle School has been so fortunate to have the opportunity to have in-person learning five days a week since the very beginning of school. That can't be understated. We were able to do so by following all of the guidelines determined by NICE Ed, by the CDC, and by the district in the reopening planning process. What you see pictured here are seventh-grade students posing in front of their work, using the Full Option Science System, which was researched, identified, and recommended to the board two years ago to update our science curriculum to align with the next-generation science standards. In addition to in-person instruction, as you also know, this year, Haldane families had the opportunity to opt for remote learning as well. When we started school in the first quarter, there were about 30 students whose families opted to have them attend remotely. At this time, two-thirds of those students have returned. We have 10 students attending remotely at this time. And we were able to accommodate those students, and what you see in these images are an image of an eighth-grade student attending class remotely, and an image of students learning with a remote presenter. A big component of our ability to, to have in-person learning is the fact that we have a beautiful campus that lends itself to learning, and we also have off-campus opportunities for learning. And, you know, working with the PTA and the reopening planning committee, looking at outdoor learning opportunities, we were able to harness that for our favor. And what you see on the slide is on the left, one of our outdoor classrooms, which will be, which is half-reset up again, and will be fully reset up with the tents shortly. And it's equipped with everything that a classroom has, including Wi-Fi. And in the center picture, that is Coach Caldero and Coach Crowe's physical education classes taking a hike down to Little Stony Point. And on the far right, one of Ms. Gessen's DCI sections taking a trip to the firehouse to look and see how they could do a community project at the firehouse. So all of these opportunities we would be able to take advantage of. So goal two for the middle school, focused on the strategic coherence plan and alignment to the Haldane essentials. So during the strategic coherence planning process, the Haldane community identified critical thinking, problem-solving, communication, growth mindset, emotional intelligence, and wellness as essential attributes that we want our Haldane students to attain in their K-12 education. So throughout the year, despite COVID, we wanted to focus on the Haldane essentials and begin to align and bring the essentials and allow them to manifest in the middle school. So we asked questions like, what do these essentials mean at the middle level? Where do they live at the middle level? And this work has taken place during faculty meetings, self-studies, and group discussions for, with our teachers. Yes? We don't want that. So during the strategic coherence planning process, we also committed to developing a focused and aligned professional learning plan. And in anticipation of the 21-22 plan, the middle level has engaged, has engaged in a lot of pertinent professional learning. So for example, we had several educators take advantage of a Google Level 1 certification course. We had middle school educators participate in a unit design planning project with Angela DeMichelle Layler, the author of Ensuring High Quality Curriculum. And we also had teachers participate in an after-school staff development where they were, where they were introduced to the work of Emma Pass, who we're going to bring back later in the year to work at a faculty meeting. And Emma Pass is the author of The Hybrid Teacher: Using Technology to Teach In-Person and Online. So the image on the left is from last year. It's from the Literacy Learning Walk that Haldane hosted. And I couldn't help but be nostalgic for some in-person professional learning, which I hope we'll be able to get back to soon. So, the strategy four from our strategic coherence plan focuses on student supports. And at the middle level, we support students with academic intervention services for reading and math. These small classes are taught by core teachers and focus on targeted interventions for gap closing. Last year, one of the middle school goals was expanding the use of data to inform instruction and strengthen academic intervention services. Some of the things that came from that were student, students setting their own goals based on the results of their NWEA MAP tests, and students leading their parent-teacher conferences in the sixth and seventh grade. This year, we're excited because the work has expanded K-12 to focus on aligning a multi-tiered system of support to bolster the whole child academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. So, and at the base of all of these supports is a universal screening tool, which is our Measures of Academic Progress. So I just wanted to go into, I know that Mrs. Sniffin went into the NWEA, and I want to try to cover some aspects. There's a lot to it, so I'm going to try to cover like some complimentary aspects without repeating what she covered. So we've been using the Northwest Educational Association's Measures of Academic Progress as a universal screener for the past seven years at Haldane. And this assessment is given to every student at least twice a year, with additional administrations given to monitor progress when necessary. So these are computer-based assessments. The students take them on the computer, and they're comprised of short-answer questions to assess reading and math skills. So the Measures of Academic Progress are normed every three to four years, most recently in 2015. And norm-reference tests report whether a task-taker performed better or worse than a hypothetical average student. So that's determined by comparing scores against the performance results of a statistically-selected group of test-takers, typically of the same age and grade level. So this allows, so when we get these results, this allows for comparison of student scores to the average scores of other students in the same grade from a wide variety of schools across the country. The other nice thing about the Measures of Academic Progress is that they respond to students' answers, offering a slightly more difficult question if the answer is correct, and a slightly less challenging question if the answer is incorrect. So screening every student in this way, in effect, provides us with an early warning system. So if there are gaps in knowledge, we catch them before they become too deep and we're able to intervene. And therefore, it helps us to make good decisions about placing students in academic intervention services. Ideally, academic intervention services are dynamic services, where when a gap is noticed, the student is moved into the service, prescriptively given an intervention that helps them close the skill gap, and then they can move out of the service. So that's the ideal. And, you know, additionally, aside from, from that, we gain an understanding of how our students compare to students nationwide, and how they're likely to perform on state exams as well. So all of this information allows our teachers to plan for individual students in their zone of proximal development, so what they're ready to learn next. So it's, it's a powerful tool. So how are our students doing? Our students are readers. Eighty-one percent of the middle school students are at or above grade level for reading. And our students are not too bad at math either. Seventy-seven percent of our middle school students are at or above grade level for mathematics. So we're happy to see that. We're also happy to see that from year, year after year over year, from last year to this year, our students did show both achievement and growth in reading and mathematics. So that was a concern with COVID slide. I think that a combination of the measures we took in the spring to keep continuity of instruction, and the fact that our kids have been in person this year have helped us to avoid what some districts that weren't able to do that might be experiencing with COVID slide. So what does it mean to be at grade level? So imagine this is a seventh-grade class, right? If we think, oh, they're at grade level, we're thinking of them all at this, you know, seventh, this one, like, kind of static marketplace. But we know that that's not the case. Anytime you have a, a group of people or students in front of you, they're all going to be at slightly a different place. So using grade-dependent standardized tests like the New York State Math and ELA tests, everyone's measured at the same level. The nice thing about the Measures of Academic Progress is that there's no, there's no ceiling to it. It, because it's adaptive to the student as they're taking the test, the test will measure that student as high or as low as need be to assess where the student is at and what they're ready to learn next. So this is, allows us to see if a student is at below or above grade level. So this is a more accurate depiction of where a class of students would be at. And with that knowledge, we could then, if you imagine the green shaded areas, teaching and the reach of your teaching, with that knowledge, teachers can scaffold and personalize instruction, as well as target groups through small instruction. So these are some of the benefits of having the, the use of the Measures of Academic Progress. So the last middle-level goal focuses on instruction, instructional practices. And as I know the Board of Education is aware of, and the Haldane community supports and appreciates, a large component of middle-level instruction is project-based learning. So this is developmentally appropriate for the middle-level student. They're in the final stages of childhood. You know, if you, if you've looked at like Erickson's Psycho-Social Stages of Development, the goal of the stage is the ability to organize, to learn how things work. You know, middle-level students tend to like take things apart, put things back together. It's all part of developmentally what they're primed to learn next, organizing and understanding how things work. So the picture on the left is from last year's Tunnel Project, which I know you're familiar with, but I didn't get to highlight because we closed down because of COVID. And then this year, this is some students working on the Connected Project for this year. And they, this may seem like all fun and games, and it is fun. And at the same time, students are doing some sophisticated mathematical problems to understand how to make their project work. They're learning advocacy skills because they're reaching out to community members, either for advice or for donations of materials or support in building things, or permission to, to work on a particular project. So they're learning a number of skills that align with their standards and are also really developmentally appropriate for them. So also on the instructional level, Haldane Middle School is true blue. Two years ago, students, faculty, and parents worked together to develop a model, motto for our school that highlights teamwork, responsibility, understanding, and excellence. This motto underpins our social-emotional program of positive behavior interventions and supports. And after much preparation last year, the definitions of these agreed-upon expectations for our school were shared, they were explicitly taught, and reinforced. And each quarter, we highlight and focus on one of our expectations. So coming up in the, we just took down our hearts of understanding, and coming up in the last quarter, we're going to ignite excellence. So it's, it's quite, being true blue has played quite a role in increasing our, our school spirit. And lastly, we're looking this year, I know I've written about this in board reports, we're looking, a subcommittee of middle school instructional councils looking at math resources. So working under the direction of our mathematics coordinator, Mr. Virgadama, with my support and with the support of our curriculum consultant, Judy Barbera, the group has worked to identify programmatic goals, research, and winnow down options to investigate programs in preparation for making a recommendation to the board. The goal is to identify and recommend, recommend an option, an option for high-quality instruction that will align with the New York State standards, have a robust online platform, and that will be user-friendly, and importantly, individualized learning for all students. The four programs currently being explored are Illustrative Mathematics, Into Math, Big Ideas Math, and Envision Maths. And we're expecting a full report to the board by next month. Questions?
I have a question. So the numbers of eighty-one percent and seventy-seven percent, and I think I ask this every year. So with our class sizes so small, once you do the math, it really is only 10, 12 students. And then year to year, it's not the same student. So a student could be a little bit behind next year, and then they're totally caught up, but it's different kids that fall into that, which really does mean we are in an excellent position, because it's not the same kids, and it's really only a couple that are just behind while the test is happening, and then they catch up, and then the next, someone else is, is in the same boat the next year. Is that, is that fair?
That is very well put, and I'm so glad that you mention it, because in real numbers, for the reading number, out of 176 exams that were sat for, 141 students were at or above grade level. And for the math, out of 174 exams that were sat for, 135 students were at or above grade level. So we're, we are in excellent condition in terms of the progress of our students. And in terms of the handful of students that need those supports, you're absolutely correct. That does change from year over year. And what our academic intervention services allow us to do in those small group settings is intervene, assist a student in closing that skill gap, and then they move out of the academic intervention services. So it's, it, it really is a prescriptive way to support our students, to make sure that they're ready to learn what's next. So thank you for bringing that.
I'd rather have a question, but I do feel obligated because of the mask to, at least, my face was doing lots of things to express how pleased I am, but, but my eyes can only do so much. So I just, you know, wanted to say that I was, the progress is wonderful, and thank you so very much.
Thank you.
At the risk of being a wet blanket, I would be surprised if there's complete turnover of the students who aren't at grade level from year to year. I mean, I think, I think it's great that there, that there is in and out, but my guess is that there's a group of students that does stay below grade level, and a group that's on the cusp all the time. But it sounds like with MAP, you're able to, to follow that. And, and that you all are experiencing it as a useful tool to identify the students who do need either Tier 2 or Tier 3 support. And that's, so that's my wet blanket.
If that's the wet blanket, I'll take it, because, you know, it's, it's absolutely true. I think that there's a small percentage, within that small percentage, that maybe year after year requires support, or exits academic intervention services. And then if a new concept is, is introduced, that the skill set is still not strong enough, they may re-enter academic intervention services for that, for, for a time. So they may come in and out.
Yeah, and I know that's, I mean, I remember when, you know, Mrs. Sniffin was so excited about the MAP. It was the idea that you would have this regular data to help you identify those students. So that was my wet blanket piece. The other thing, though, and, and I think knowing what the MAP says, because it's a nationally-normed test, is really good. In my experience, and this is a little wonky, of looking at data like nationally-normed tests and New York State tests, that the New York State tests are, I, my perception is that if you look at a New York State test, the percentage of kids who aren't meeting, for example, benchmark according to state standards, might be higher compared to like a nationally-normed test. Is that? And I'm wondering if there are any implications for that. Because, don't get me wrong, I think the MAP's really important, and I don't think that the New York State standards, right, the New York State standardized tests or the end-all and be-all. But I was sort of wondering, like, is, that's my impression, is, is that right? And what are the implications of that? You know, I don't know.
It's, it's an important point, because, you know, each set of assessments has value. And that's one of the reasons why I know Mrs. Sniffin had said that we use multiple measures. It's one of the reasons why you, we use multiple measures. And we, we were saddened that we didn't have the state tests to use as one of our measures to triangulate data, to make decisions about academic intervention services this fall. I did include a slide in the appendix, in case folks were interested, on the difference between New York State exams and, and the Measures of Academic Progress tests. So, and they're, they're hard to compare. So, and they're, they're hard to compare and, and, you know, it's hard to say that, oh, the New York State tests are harder because it's not a apples-to-apples comparison. So, you know, the goal with the New York State exam is did the student meet or exceed, exceed this grade level standard? Whereas the goal with the MAP test is what is this student ready to learn? So, you know, one of the other, one of the benefits of the MAP test over the New York State exams is that we receive the results immediately. And I, I know that's, that's something that right now, our region is in an advocacy period with Albany to talk about what could we capitalize on the fact that we've been forced to change how New York State assesses? And one of the things that is being asked of the state is could we turn around that information, those test scores from state exams more quickly so that we can actually utilize the data in a, in a more beneficial window? So that's another way. The other, the other idea is that the New York State exams have a ceiling, whereas the MAP tests, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll tell you, like if you're a seventh grader and you are performing mathematical operations on an eleventh grade level, the MAP test is going to tell you that. Whereas the New York State test has, has a ceiling, it'll tell you that you're a four, but it won't tell you, you know, what you're ready to learn next. So, and that's, those are some of the differences. I could go into more, but I just.
No, it, it's gratifying to continue to hear for you to build on what Mrs. Sniffin said about the usefulness of the, you know, of the, of the usefulness of the MAP and how you all are able to, to take advantage of it. No, that's, it's really helpful. Thank you.
I have one question, and this is, I know it's a relatively small sample size, but I'm curious to know if you're also gathering data on the difference between those students that have been remote versus those who are in school and if that's a, if that's meaningful information or if, you know, once we are all together, once again, we will just determine what that intervention is, whether you are in, in remote or otherwise.
That's, that's a good point. And because we do have such a small number, we have only been gathering data anecdotally. And the anecdotal data is that nothing replaces the efficacy of in-person instruction. We have not though, delved into any hard data collection.
I would just ask a quick sort of follow-up on that is, is it, are the data normed to anything other than grade level? Do you get into ethnicity or gender or socioeconomic or anything like that? Or is it just seventh graders?
For, for the measures of academic progress?
Yep.
They're, they're, they're normed on several factors, you know, across the nation for, for students. I do think that they go into demographics, but I'm not studied enough to tell you which.
Okay, okay.
But I can get that answer for you.
I was just wondering whether there's any implications for us and I realize that we have a small sample size, but if you're norming against everybody, what does that show? And the other question would be on the choice of the curriculum, which is great, fantastic. I asked this of Julia last time, but I'll ask you this time. How do you look down into elementary and make sure that the curriculum you're choosing works well with the curriculum being taught and potentially even to high school? How, how does that sort of cross district work?
Yeah, so it's, it's so important, especially since one of our goals from the strategic coherence planning process is K-12 alignment. So it's something that we were very mindful about throughout the process. And Mr. Virgadamo meets as a department with the high school. So there had been many conversations there where he's been keeping Mr. Sisano, who's the department chair and the high school math teachers apprised of what the small subcommittee on the middle level is finding in terms of resources. And on the elementary level, we had invited some of the upper elementary teachers to, you know, dip in and kind of audit the process this year just because I, I believe and I don't want to, you know, I believe, I believe that the elementary school will start a research process into mathematics at some point soon. You know, so I think that it's really important to align. I would also say that it's one of the reasons why it's nice for a district to have a K-12 curriculum, dedicated curriculum person, because then these cycles of program review can happen in, in a bigger conversation, in a much more aligned fashion. We did, I think that we were mindful of that for the math, especially because we had gone through the strategic coherence planning process that revealed a strong desire to have K-12 alignment. So we made accommodations for that.
Great, thank you very much. That's great to hear.
That was something, I, I was on the subcommittee though, when we did this, the strategic plan before this one, I was on the subcommittee with Julia Sniffin and I remember hearing her just say, she said over and over and over again, I don't even remember what subcommittee it was, but the importance of this curricular alignment like that was something that the administrators and the, the administrators and the faculty really, really wanted. It's, 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 it's great that it's, I mean, it really shows like how these efforts, you know, build on each other, you know?
Yeah, if I could add, we were talking about curriculum alignment today at a meeting we were having, probably talk about it every day or every week in some way. And just a subtle distinction, remembering that the curricular resources that we recommend for adoption of the board are not in and of themselves curriculum. There, a textbook is a resource, right, to support our curriculum and that we do reserve a level of funding each year for curriculum writing that typically will occur in the summertime by our teachers to develop the curriculum and then use their, the resources that we're providing, whether it be text resources or other, to support the curriculum that they're developing. So I just want to make sure we, keep in mind, we center our teachers in the development of that curriculum because that's what's most important and, and they're who's most connected to the state standards. The textbooks never completely align. There's always gaps, areas that are overemphasized. Remember these textbook companies are developing a textbook that they can sell to teachers across fifty states more often than not. So there's always going to be distinctions that have to be drawn by our teachers in determining what components to emphasize with their kids, what to totally disregard sometimes and what maybe hit the mark just right. But we have two separate, at a board level, two separate commitments. One is to the resource itself and then the funding to the curriculum writing process itself as well.
That's a, that's a super helpful clarification. Thank you.
Dr. Sookie, I was sitting here thinking about how middle school is such like this transitional time, right? And we always talk about it as transitional for students, right? Hormonally, personally, like it's, we always, it's always kind of known as this big transition time for kids. But as you were talking, I was thinking about it as this real transition time for a school. Like you're charged with transitioning the elementary kids into middle school. Simultaneously, you're charged with helping to transition the middle school kids into high school. So you've got these two bookends of like significant transition for your students and what a task that is for the teachers. And then I was thinking about it in terms of K through twelve alignment, how you're really this pivot point connecting the elementary and the high school in terms of curriculum and curriculum development. And so I don't really know that I have a question as much as I just want to say, I really recognize it and it was becoming clearer to me on, on more levels throughout your presentation that this, the middle school is an incredible transition point on multiple levels for our students and our school and our teachers and how important it is to get those transitions right. Because transitions can really shift development. So just a comment to say, I'm recognizing how important what you do is and what an incredible job it seems like we are doing.
Thank you. The middle level is a very special time.
So true.
Any other questions for Marian? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll transition to, no pun intended, to the budget presentation. Marian, I'm actually going to come up there. However, you can stay because you seem to be able to see the screen okay and I can't, so maybe you can help me when I pull the next one up. I'm joking. Had you signed in initially yet? So you may need to re-sign in, maybe we got timed out. Do you need me to click sign in? Is that you? Okay, so good evening again. And as part of our budget development process, I do have some updated information to share with the board this evening. Obviously, this has been an ongoing conversation for the greater part of the last two months. And this year's process as compared to years past is a bit unique and is presenting some challenges. And I'm, I think we're still at a point where I just want to be candid and open about what the challenges are, present some information this evening, hear the board's current thinking about where we are in the budget development process and then discuss next steps. Perhaps this year more so than previous years, we don't have clarity on a few important pieces of information that we usually have in budget development. One, unique to this year, is we're not, we don't yet have any clarity around how the recent federal stimulus package will impact Haldane. So we know that New York State is going to receive a certain level of funding. That funding, part of it is designated for schools, but how that translates to actual dollars for Haldane is, is unknown at this point. We do think we will have that information by April first. So over the next two weeks, we should have clarity around that. The second piece is that the state's budget development process is still, it's still in process and the Senate and the Assembly are now working with the governor's executive proposal. And what we're seeing is that the Senate and the Assembly's one-house budgets include an increase to school aid and that's, that's good. That's good for, for Haldane, it's good for all schools. Included in that is a three-year, a potential or the potential for a phase in of additional foundation aid. And that's really good for us because that's a, we have not received our full allotment on foundation aid in some time. Now, all this being said, this is typical in a state development budget process, that the governor makes his executive proposal, the state, the Senate and the Assembly have a response to that and usually we fall somewhere in the middle. So how that plays out is still to be determined, but I'm inclined to think that Haldane will only receive additional monies to what extent, we don't yet know. So with that in mind, we're continuing to develop a, a budget using the governor's executive budget proposal figures in our, in our planning. We feel that that's the best way to proceed from a planning perspective and it will be easier in the coming weeks to add things back into the budget as opposed to being surprised, caught off guard, having limited time, obviously because we're on a deadline that may not fully line up with what the state's deadline is. And that will put us in the best position moving forward to, to adapt to whatever new information that, that we receive. You know, I say that knowing that there may be some anxiety with some of the information that I shared tonight, but I really do think in the coming weeks, it's better to approach it this way than it would be to be caught off guard by anything. And, you know, that's just, I, I think unfortunately, the position that we're in and how we're, how we have to approach this. And it's how we are approaching it on an administrative level. So these first few slides are, are going to be familiar to you because it's largely information that's already been presented to the board. Our property tax cap is coming in right now at 1.8%. This is the lowest that the tax cap has been since the 2016, 17 school year and I'm going to speak a little further to that in a couple of minutes. As I just mentioned, it's unclear exactly how federal stimulus money will impact. I, I do think the federal stimulus money will be likely minimal. The state, the work that's going on at the Assembly and the state senate right now, that, that could have a real impact on us depending on how that fleshes out in the next couple of weeks. Just as a point of comparison, this is the budget-to-budget levy-to-levy increases over the past seven or eight years or so. So going back to 2014, 15, all the way through what we're projected to be at next school year, I realize that's not final. And again, you, oh, by the way, we did load this into your executive content if you want to access it in front of you. I realize the screen can be difficult to see for those of you who are physically here. It displays a little better for those who are watching at home. So here, again, you can see that if you were to look at the last column, our budget-to-budget and levy-to-levy increase coming in relatively lower than since the 16, 17 school year. And I will say in some of these other years, just looking back and, and examine this, there were some other dynamics at play that maybe didn't influence or negatively influence budget development in the way that I think is playing out now. So for example, back in the 14, 15 school year, you'll see that our, our budget-to-budget increase was, was quite low. However, we received a significant amount of additional state aid that year. So it didn't quite create the same, even though the, the budget increase was low and the levy-to-leve increase was low, there was additional funding coming into the school that helped offset any perceived negative impact. As we sit right now, we don't see that, so in our planning for next school year. And you can really see how the levy, just knowing the last three years really well because I've, I've been here for those, the levy can really vary. Last year, we were at a point where our levy limit was, was over three percent. This year, we're at a point where it's a percent plus lower. And for every percent that we levy, we can equate a value of that to about $200,000. So just consider that. So between last year and this year, when we're considering the levy, it's $200,000, north of that actually, difference in, in potential revenue by way of tax dollars to the school. As you've heard me say in the past or examine in the past, our per pupil expenditure is, is very low in comparison to our peers. As I shared with you last time, I'm using a different, a peer group this year as opposed to just the county figures, which I've used in the past, just as a different way of displaying this. We come in low on either one, but this is looking at schools that I think are more similar to Haldane than some of the schools we've looked at ourselves compared, compared ourselves to in the past. And for those who are in the audience who may not be able to see this, just reading from the top, North Salem, Valhalla, Garrison, Reinbeck, Putt Valley, Millbrook, Spackenkill, Tuckahoe and Haldane. So small school districts, fewer than 1,500 students, who's free and reduced lunch populations, just using that as a measure of economic need within the school community, coming in within five to 10% of ours. And the combined wealth ratio, so the, the measure of relative wealth in the community by way of home values is also considered, developed this comparison group for us. Whereas sometimes, you know, if you were to consider county-based schools, the, you know, the townships and the communities within Putnam County can really vary by those factors. So I thought this was a, a better view or glimpse into look at our spending compared to, per pupil spending as compared to others. When I was speaking with the staff about this, you know, the question comes up, well, why? Why, why does ours come in so much lower? If we're developing a budget up to the levy limit, why would we see our spending so much lower than other school districts? Well, remember, the levy limit can vary district by district. So just because our levy limit's 1.8, it could be 3.2 in another school district. So that may be an impact. But I would say that in observing levies across communities, they tend to kind of, over year over year or over time, kind of flesh out to be even. What, I, I think this reflects and why I've always recommended to the board here, that we should be levying up to the limit to the extent that we can, is because our per pupil expenditure is relatively low. But if we had years in the past where we self-imposed a limit, maybe we had years as a community of fiscal conservatism where we wanted to be really mindful of how much we taxed our community, that has a compounding effect over years. So if you were to go through that, let's just say a two or a three-year period where you tried to keep taxes really low, it's understandable, it happens in communities. I came from one where it was like that. It really does add up over time. It adds up considerably. And, and just through our investigation today, we found a few years within the last 10, so looking more at 2010, 11, 11, 12, where the board, when it set the tax rate, similar to how the board did at a very modest level last year, decided to set the tax rate lower in the summer months than, than it could have. So that's just a, a notation there. Just a summary slide of our revenue overview. So again, our state aid with some caveats there is coming in right around $3 million. You'll see my note that there, is coming in right around $3 million. You'll see my note that this was based that we received $6 billion in federal stimulus money. It does look like New York's going to receive close to $15 billion in federal stimulus money. I just don't think it's going to, it will not change our aid allocation based on the governor's proposal. When I dig into the federal stimulus funds, it does seem like the majority of those monies are going to go to schools or communities with greater need in the way that they've been designated in that legislation. Our revenue can be thought of as the tuition that we generate from Garrison, appropriated fund balance, use of reserves, and what we anticipate we could levy if we were to go up to the levy limit. That would generate a target budget of $25.6 million. And as I shared last time, if we were to look at our budget from a rollover perspective at this point, that creates a $1.2 million gap. Again, as I shared with the board last time, there were already areas that we were anticipating that we could make reductions or we would be making adjustments. What stands out are the use of our interventionists. We had created those positions at the beginning of the school year in response to the COVID pandemic, and the need to accommodate all remote learners. That was considered to be a one-time cost. We put that out there as such, so that would come off or out of the budget for next school year. We already are anticipating a level of breakage due to a retirement, two retirements, excuse me. And there was, I'm sorry. Yeah, two retirements. Yes, and we had the breakage related to transition at the high school with the change of positions in the guidance counselor position. We are already anticipating increased funding, or a need for increased funding for out-of-district special education placements for next school year. So, that's an add there. We refinanced debt to the district's benefit. We received the final rate adjustment for TRS, and we did see an area within a line on the budget where we could make an adjustment for credits that we pay to our teachers for additional graduate accrual, course accrual that had not been, was not consistent with what we typically pay year over year. So, with those adjustments considered on the rollover budget amount, that still leaves us with a deficit of approximately $840,000. Now, the charge at this point from a planning perspective for the administration, so me and my team, was to examine our spending across several areas, and to consider, one, the typical experience that our students come to have at Haldane each year, and not dramatically impacting that. So, the extracurriculars that they participate in, the low class sizes that they enjoy, the connections with each other and with our, our staff on a day-to-day basis. Let's just set that, that, that can't change. We want to continue that. As well as what our legal obligations and responsibilities are through mandated programs that we have to offer our students. And, and let's see where we could potentially staff ourselves more efficiently with those things in mind, with those parameters. So, with that, a number of the reductions that I'm going to just illustrate this evening could be made, not all of them, but a number of them could be made without having a direct impact to a Haldane student. A Haldane student will still have relative, the same class sizes, a comparable level of support if they are a student who requires additional support, and access to the same extracurricular programs or co-curricular programs that they currently enjoy. So, the majority of these. And I'll try to qualify where I feel a potential area of reduction that I'm presenting where that would change the experience that our, our kids typically have or our families typically have here. So, these were the areas that we examined. How we are organized administratively, how we deploy our support staff by way of our aides and our teaching assistants, how we utilize our related service staff, our speech supports, occupational and physical therapy, our class size and structure to see if there's any potential adjustments we could make. And we would call this, I don't love the term, but right sizing, essentially where we may have more students leaving a school than are coming into it, so we can make an adjustment but still have the same class sizes that we've always had because of those transitions. And then on the revenue end, so this is, isn't a, a reduction, could we evaluate our Garrison tuition rate to see moving towards a full rate there and what the impact of that would be? So, I wanted to share that. We had talked about that a little bit at our last meeting. The board had also inquired about seeing the reserve funding, current reserve funding status, so we've included that as well. So, if you look at our current administrative organization on paper, so this comes with some qualifiers, this is how we are organized administratively across several areas. We have an elementary, a middle, and a high school principal. We have an athletic director, dean of students position. We have an interim currently in that role. We have a director of pupil personnel services. On paper, we have a director of curriculum and instruction position. It's unfilled, however, we're spending those monies on consultant support by way of BOSI. So, Judy, we're contracting with Judy through this school year, and have not yet hired our, our own Haldane employee for that position. And again, on paper, technically, we have enough funding for a director of human resources position. We've neither created the position yet officially. I've presented you some information on that, but on paper, we have the funding for that position. It's mostly wrapped up in maintenance and operation salaries that have been unfilled. So, again, we could, on paper, fund seven administrative positions right now. The reality is, we're, we're funding six of them, because that director of human resource position does not exist, and we have not filled the, the maintenance operation, maintenance and operation positions that we think we could consolidate to create the director of HR position. So, I just wanted, these are conversations the board's been a part of. I just want to be the board and anybody who would be watching to be really clear on my thinking of how I approach this, even though you may say, well, we don't have a director of human resources, but you understand where I'm coming from. So, at that level of structure, that's a total of seven positions, and the cost for next year, were all those positions to be filled at our anticipated budget for each position, would be $1.3, $1.3 million. Now, as an illustration, and again, I want to, you'll hear me say this multiple times, it is not my recommendation, I'm not recommending anything presented, planned to present tonight, but as an illustration of what we could do or where we could reduce on an administrative level and for sake of your consideration and perhaps conversation, we, as a team, looked at our, consolidating our administrative organization if we had to, and we could go as far as doing this, and still address areas of need from a district level, and still operate our buildings. And this is not unlike a model that the district at one point employed, with the caveat that we did not, I don't believe we've had dedicated curriculum and human resource support on an administrative level. And again, I'm not recommending this, I'm just using it as an illustration that if we were in real need, how could we further consolidate our admin component to still address and operate our district on an administrative level while reducing our costs? So, we could go from seven to five, and that would reduce our costs by $350,000. This example would necessitate a reconfiguration of our middle school. You could certainly make the case, and I would understand it, to keep the middle school, elementary, high school designated as they are, but then we would likely have to consider or reconsider the director of curriculum and human resource position. So, I just want to be candid about that. I'm just using this to illustrate and to promote the conversation. If we were to reconfigure our, our middle school, there's multiple ways we could approach it. I mentioned the K8 model versus the, or a 612 model. You could also run a K6-712 model. Haldane's done that in the past. I would say, the one caveat I would make, I've, I've had to close a school before, and granted, in a bigger district, it's a bit of a different process as opposed to a campus where you're inclusive. I would say, if you're going to close or consolidate a school, you should take a year to do it. To plan it, to communicate it, to work with your community, to facilitate the process. I mean, if, if you're doing it, you're doing it well, as much as you don't like to have to make decisions like that, you're giving yourself at least one year to do it. If we were in a real jam and we had to do it out of necessity, we could do it here. Again, I hope we don't, I hope we don't have to, but it is an area where we could further consolidate. This does not impact student program necessarily in any way directly. It certainly impacts our ability, I think, to address certain areas of how we facilitate the school district operation on an administrative level on a day-to-day basis. I, I would also just like to add that were we to keep the, the school model the way it is, but consider just doing away with the curriculum and human resource, I think there's an impact there on some of our longer-term goals and objectives. When we talk about recruitment, when we talk about retention of staff, obviously, we, we spoke of human resource needs just last month. I think there's an impact there. When we talk about curriculum alignment, which we've talked about a lot over the last few years, there's a couple of examples we'll share with the board from a conversation today and some of the curriculum work where we really feel are great examples of what we mean. We talk about curriculum alignment with the Haldane essentials embedded into student experience in the classroom in an articulated way. That work won't, I, I don't see that work happening well or on, in any expedited fashion without leadership at the curriculum level. All right. So, a second area that we examined was our use of support staff, and this has been a continued area of review each year for us. And, and we don't, and I ask with all due respect, you know, in our timeline, we don't, we're still working with this. So, we haven't, again, made any final decisions, but if we just had to reduce the use of our support staff to what was necessary to provide, to, to allow for our buildings to operate, because our aides and our TAs play a role in supporting our kids at recess and other, in the cafeteria and other less structured times during the day, but that are necessary. And they, they also are, play a role in supporting students with learning differences through IEP mandated supports. So, as we examined our aide and teaching assistant schedules, we anticipate that we will be able to make reductions to how we are staffed in this area for a, a couple of reasons. One, we do have some students who will be graduating, who have, who carry with them a level of teaching aide support. So, since those students are moving on, we don't have necessarily a need for, for the continued aide support that was provided as part of those students' educational programs. And, and we have to do our part here to also project to the extent that we can what supports may be necessary to support students who have aide support designated at other IEPs to next school year, and we, we have done that. So, these reductions, aside from, again, the students who we have leaving the school system, do not include reducing any mandated services that were required to provide. They're just areas where we feel we could be more efficient in how we deploy our staff without impacting any mandated requirement there. Specifically, how many in each title? We're still working with. Generally, it's going to come in to be somewhere between four and five. But is it going to be, you know, three aides and one TA, or three TAs and one aide? Again, the salaries and benefits are comparable. We're just not quite there yet, and we need a little bit more time to work on that. We have charged ourselves with trying to define this, because we don't want to leave this open over the course of the next two weeks. We just needed a little bit more time before we get there, but we do feel we were close enough to say it looks to be somewhere between four and five positions that we could, we could consolidate. Now, at the class size and structure levels, we're currently enjoy some of the lowest class sizes in the region, and I say that, it's an important part of our program here. It's what many families have come to expect as part of their children's experience at Haldane, and, and that's important, and we want to make sure that we honor that, and not put forward anything that would dramatically impact our, our class sizes across K12. We will say though, however, that there's a sweet spot when it comes to class sizes. You don't want class sizes to be so low that you don't have a robust classroom environment, and again, you don't want it to be so high where our teachers can't provide an individualized level of support to the students who are in those classes. So, we're trying to find that sweet spot. Just a few illustrations here. And again, I'd refer you to the charts that are in front of you as opposed to the one that's displaying here, but for our audience, this is our cohorts at each grade level in 2010, 2015, and 2020. And it's our cohorts at the elementary level. So, in kindergarten, grade one, two, three, four, and five, and again, repeating for 2010, 2015, 2020, so we're doing five-year lookbacks. And you'll note that the average cohort size in 2010 was around 65, so in general, in 2010, our kindergarten class had about 65 kids in it. Our first grade class had about 65 kids in it. It varied from, obviously, that's what the bars represented, varied from grade level to grade level, but on average, it was 60, there were 65 students in each class. And fast forward to 2020, that's now approximately 53 students in each class. And again, there's variability. You can see that the second grade class is quite small in relation to the others. So, you're always going to have, you're never going to have consistency year over year. God, I would love that, but you don't. You have bubble classes and such that, that come into play, but what I'm really just trying to illustrate here is that we have fewer students in our elementary school now than we did 10 years ago. And over that 10-year period of time, to the tune of almost 100 students. And over that 10-year period of time, we've made a reduction of one section in the elementary school. So, about 100 fewer kids, only one fewer teacher. And obviously, you, you know where I'm going with this. And let me set it up a little bit more if you didn't. Yeah. Comparatively, this is our, our peer group. Again, same group of schools that I used to show our per pupil expenditure earlier in the presentation. So, in our peer group, again, we're third from the top here, top being the lowest class sizes in our peer group. We are third from the, the top there. Very competitive class sizes in our peer group, which include very competitive schools. And then on our next slide, I shared this with you last year. This is the Putnam Northern Westchester region, so just getting a glimpse regionally of where we fall. Again, third from the top in terms of lowest class sizes in the region. So, very competitive. Now, you'll know, I was talking K5, I'm showing 16. I pull this information from a state database. Doesn't always line up the way I want it to. Our, our state database organizes our elementary component as grades one through six. Sixth grade typically, traditionally is thought of to be an elementary school section, even though most districts now align it with their middle schools, and kindergarten's non-mandated across the state. So, this is the data that the state collects, and in turn, I can pull from, from their databases. These are our current class sizes at our elementary, at our elementary school, or in our elementary school, excuse me. So, generally, we range from 16 to 17. Now, Sean had asked an important question last meeting, or perhaps it was two meetings ago, about, does the budget include necessary accommodations considering in light of COVID? And I would say the most significant accommodation that we're making in light of COVID is keeping our class sizes at a, right around this level, or will be, just when it comes to considering distancing requirements and our ability to manage both the students who are in a classroom environment and those who may be accessing, continuing to access instruction remotely. We want to be mindful of that going into next school year. If you've paid attention to districts over the last year and how they've tried to accommodate bringing more kids in, this was the most significant variable. So, they were caught either hiring TAs or hiring more teachers to try to get their class sizes from 24 to 12 and splitting the group into two, so that they could have more elementary-age students in, in, inside of their schools, while honoring health and safety requirements. You'll see some districts foregoing that now. They were never able to pull it off, so what they're doing is they're putting kids closer together. So, what they're doing is they're putting kids closer together with barriers, as we were talking about earlier. As we look ahead to next year, if all things were to remain the same, so we have, currently have 18 sections in total in our elementary school, if we were to keep 18 sections, this is how those sections would likely load going into next school year. And I took some liberties here. It's not our process for the superintendent to determine what the sections are, but I did move some sections around just because it makes sense too. And for illustration's sake, it wouldn't have made, it wouldn't have been easy to look at. So, obviously, as larger classes move up, I'm moving a section up with them. But this still illustrates 18 sections in our elementary school. I just moved some of them around to balance the classes as best I, I could, rather than keeping those stagnant. So, you'll see though, even with that in mind, with 18 sections, we now have classes loading lower than we did this previous year. So, class sizes of 12, 14, obviously, those become areas to, to consider. Could we operate those, could we staff those grade levels differently? And I would say it's possible at this point to reduce one classroom section at the elementary school and still maintain our current class size averages. So, we could go from 18 to 17 and still have class averages between 16 and 17. We could technically reduce two sections. However, that would cause one grade level to have class sizes above what I'll say the typical average for Haldane. So, if we were to reduce two, if out of necessity, we had to go further to resolve our deficit, five out of the six grade levels in the elementary school, so including kindergarten in that, would still have class sizes somewhere around 16 or 17. One of the grade levels would have class sizes over 20. And that's just something that, you know, I want to be candid about. For purposes of the summary I'm going to provide at the end of this, I'm illustrating two class sizes being reduced. So, you're going to see that when we come down. So, I just ask that you keep that in mind as we go through. Now, in speaking with Mary Ann and Julia, we do feel that it is possible, again, if it was necessary to do so, to reduce one secondary teacher. Where similar spot is the TAs and the aides, we would like about two more weeks with that before defining specifically where that would be. This would have a minimal impact potentially on our students, depending on who that teacher was or where, what department that came out of by way of electives and potentially other course offerings that we would provide. So, I just want to mention that. We could still though, run our schools largely with one less secondary teacher, whether that be at the middle or the high school. If it was at the middle school level, it would impact how we are teamed at two of the grade levels. So, again, there is an impact there. And you'll know earlier in the presentation, I mentioned an ad on special education out-of-district placements. So, when we're adding in that area, and again, these are projections. It's a difficult area to project around when we're still, when we're still in annual, conducting annual reviews. But in consideration of that, it would create less need for staffing as we're currently staffed right now in special education on campus. So, something to consider. And that's part of our consideration in reducing or being able to reduce special education support up to 1.2. And I just want to illustrate this. We had a part-time special educator who, a full-time job mid-year, not to get into the specifics about the specific person. We have not had a need to refill that position. So, that's 0.6 of this. We have a special educator who's retiring. Based on our projections going into next year, we will not need that level of full-time support based on what we project to be the anticipated level of need among our special education students going into next school year. So, we would be reducing that position from a full-time to a 0.4 position. That's the machinations behind that. I will say, there's two areas that can be a bit speculative in budget development. Kindergarten enrollment, especially now because more people want their kids to go to school full-time. We actually had two people register today. Think of that. Mid-year, it's March. They're moving, so their kids can go to school full-time now in March, too, today. So, but that just gives you a glimpse into like the environment right now and I think illustrates kind of what can be a bit speculative. This is why we did the enrollment study. And I will say, but there's caveats to an enrollment study, and I don't remember a global pandemic being one of them that was shared.
Not one of the factors we considered.
It's definitely had an impact. So, but our enrollment study would suggest that our kindergarten numbers are going to come in at 38 next year. We're currently at 36. So, you know, it might hold. That's what we were projecting, right around what we were projected to get. But we do see a community dynamic playing out right now where there's a high level of desirability to get out of the city and especially to get into a place if you can send your kid to school five days a week. So, that's one area, again, a little speculative. And the second is special education. More so even than, than kindergarten because we're going through an annual review process. And I just think we need to be mindful of that. And annual reviews can go all the way up to and through the summer. So, we just have to be mindful of that. And again, right now, based on what we're projecting and what we see on paper, we think we could, we could do this. But not with a high level of conviction or certainty, given some of the unknowns or the other variables that are associated with the annual review process. Okay. And I just wanted to speak to Garrison Tuition as well. So, we charge Garrison a reduced rate for them to send their high school students to us. This is an agreement the district has had with Garrison for quite some time, well over 10 years. What changes over time is your, your, your district tuition rate, the Seneca Falls rate. So, this may have been a very modest reduction 10, 12, 15 years ago when it started. But remember, your Seneca Fall rate is being recalculated every year and is rising year over year. So, the discrepancy, whereas our tuition rate may have remained flat or may not have been adjusted along the way. I don't believe it's been adjusted since I've been here. I haven't recommended that to the board. So, I can, I can speak to the last three years. So, just giving you an overview here, our budgeted tuition at the current rate is $713,000. If we were to charge the full Seneca Falls rate, that would come in at $946,000. We are considering a phased rate increase. With all due respect, we think that's probably most fair because this isn't something we were discussing at the beginning of the year. Garrison is in the middle of their budget development process. So, we, we want to be respectful of a potential change as they're dealing with their budget dynamics similar to how we are. So, what I would propose is a two-year phase into the full rate using next year as a bridge. So, to increase their tuition costs to Haldane next school year. And then, the following year to go to the full Seneca Falls rate. Now, just a dynamic that's played out since, or that we've learned, a factor that we've learned since the last time we met was that we're actually anticipating getting fewer Garrison students than we typically do next school year. So, that creates even more of a, a need to examine this. We typically have around 12 or 13 students who come to Haldane each year that we incorporate or that we plan on having. And it usually works out. Next year, we're only anticipating five. So, small school. Obviously, you're familiar with the dynamic, and I haven't talked to Carl Albano, their superintendent, too much about this yet. But is there anything within our control that could be influencing that, obviously? Because we want to control what's within our control. But sometimes too, when you have small classes, and Garrison has very small classes, you're just going to see a natural fluctuation from year over year. So, that's a conversation that I'll have with Carl, just to see if there's anything more we can learn from that or no. So, we can anticipate that in the future if it happens to come up again. But there was no early indication that there was. It's just five students choosing to come to Haldane as compared to what we usually see. So, our current rate is $13,980. The Seneca Falls rate is $18,500. I'm going to recommend that we go up to a tuition rate of $16,264 next year, and then we'll go to the full Seneca Falls rate the year that follows. The board had inquired about a summary of our reserve funding. This is a summary of those funds. They are there for your reference. I'd imagine there'll be questions at the end regarding this. And what I'm going to do in a moment is I'm going to sit up there and Ann can come here. That way, we can have, each have our own microphone because I think the questions are going to vary. So, if there's questions about reserve funding, I'd just ask that you hold on those for now. Ann and I'll switch seats and then we can get at any questions regarding how the district has funded these reserves and how they, the impact that a change in reserve funding may have. One thing that I can speak to just briefly, this is just a summary from, we went through a, a credit rating process last year as we re-examined refinancing some of our debt, which I alluded to earlier, as well as in preparation for taking on additional, taking out a loan for the 2019 bond referendum. So, we go through a process of having the district's credit reevaluated. And we came in with a very good credit rating, AA3 rating, which is very good, very competitive. That makes us eligible for very good interest rates if we were to take out a loan, which we will need to do when we get into referendums or bonding or refinancing debt. However, the question comes, well, how can we get a higher rating? And what are, what's done is we're compared to other school districts that have that rating, and they're, a part of what is reviewed is your fund balance and your, the use of your reserves and how your reserves are funded. So, Ann can speak to this better than I can. But part of what limited us from getting a higher bond rating or credit rating last school year was the current rate at which we are funding our reserves. So, it's just something for your consideration as we have that discussion. And Ann can take you through the chart here and the impact of each and how it factors into our credit rating. Again, we have a very good credit rating, and I just want to establish that. We are financed very well. This is by no means a negative reflection on our finances or how the district has operated its finances in the previous years. We have an excellent credit rating. We could get a higher credit rating, and it's important to consider how we could do such. So, this is the summary slide of these potential areas. And again, I just want to reiterate, I've recommended none of these. But if we're really in a pinch and we have to resolve an $840,000 budget deficit, we have to look at how we are staffed and how we're organized. There's no way we'll get at that figure without doing such in my, in my mind with, at the levy limit of 1.8%. So, obviously, that's a parameter that I'm using. So, they're listed in their entirety here. And just to summarize, either consolidating the middle school, consolidating the two director positions in the one, examining the use, reducing the use of our aides and TAs. I'm showing two elementary school positions here. And again, there was a caveat or some caveats to that second one. I'm showing 1.2 special education positions here. Secondary teacher position here. I did ask our principals to examine some of the other programs that we run in support of the school just to see what, if any, were underutilized or perhaps every year is a good opportunity just to reevaluate those. I'll speak to the HART program, which we run in our high school. This is not a full elimination of the program. In speaking with Julia, there's just parts of the program that are better accessed than others. So, it's a reduction of those parts of the program that are not accessed by our students, like, like other parts, excuse me. So, it's a reduction. It's not an elimination of the program. Homework help at the elementary level is an area that we feel could be reevaluated, and our students would be fine without having that supplemental level of support in place. That's a, quite frankly, it's an older model that was born really at the onset of the state assessment process. I don't think it has necessarily any direct impact on student achievement in our schools. It does help them with homework. I don't want to get into a whole debate on homework and its usefulness. But there's some more recent literature that we probably should be examining in consideration of what homework, the long-term impacts of homework, what's effective and what's not. But that's for another day. Miscellaneous programs, running summer school, again, similarly, summer school programs generally, unless you're talking about credit accrual, which does serve its purpose, it's probably an area we can really reevaluate and reduce our spending in, in comparison. It's also an area that if we are to get federal stimulus money, it will likely be designated for such. Interestingly. So, we could have money coming to us designated for something that we may not necessarily think we need. So, I see that as, you know, just, it is what it is. It'll be easier to offset that with the federal stimulus dollars we, we may get. Chess club is something that Ms. Jammon has examined. I realize that that does have an impact on the students who are involved in it. So, it comes at a modest cost. It would not be difficult to add it back in if it was necessary. But again, we are examining some of the, the programs that are currently running and the level at which they're running and whether it may, if we're forced, faced with a difficult decision, whether it may be necessary to eliminate them. So, all this being said, the bulk of these obviously are associated with staffing. The potential budget reductions come in at $970,000. Our current deficit was $840,000, so we've gone beyond that. So, again, as I said, I felt it was, at the beginning, it was best to position this conversation, given the timing and some of the other variables that would be playing out from a place of adding back in as opposed to being caught off guard and having to make last-minute reductions going, you know, into a board having to adopt the budget just about a month from now. So, again, I know it may create some unease or some anxiety, but I do think as things play out, it will just be better for us to operate from this starting point than potentially not have been in a position to, to consider these things and, and then need to a week or two from now. So, I don't think we will need to go this far. We won't need to go this far because we're already over the amount that our deficit reflects. But I do think that we will have to consider some of this. You know, even with additional state aid, even in the off chance some of the federal stimulus money makes its way to us, it's not going to be up to $840,000. I just can't conceive of anything I've read up to this point that it's going to be funding up to that amount. So, we would, we're going to have to consider some of this as we develop the budget. A few just last notes. Tax impact at the 1.88%. Remember, the amount of taxes an individual homeowner pays is based on the market value of their home generally. So, at $400,000 market value, the impact of a 1.8% increase would be $127 additional dollars in their tax bill. So, it's about $10 a month if your home's, this market value of your home is at that level. And we've, we've included a range here for reference. And as far as our timeline, just to give the board a sense of how this is structured, we obviously have our meeting this evening. This week, we have started our budget conversations with our faculty and staff. I presented to the staff yesterday. There's a PTA meeting tomorrow. I'll be sharing some of this information, not obviously in as much detail, but with our PTA and also encouraging those who tend to get out the word and attend next week's Community Budget Forum, which is scheduled for next Tuesday night. We'll have a board meeting directly thereafter, just for the board to further process what they've heard at that point. I do think we're upon the time where each week I may have some additional information about state budget. So, hopefully, that's just nothing but good news, right? And we're heading in a positive direction from this point forward, but we'll see. Next week might be a little early for that. I would like to hear the feedback from the board towards the end of next week and the week that follows. week that follows, because it's still my goal to present a recommended budget to you on April 6th. So I don't love the timeline any more than you do, but I think it's important for us to, to try to honor it because it keeps us moving through this conversation and keeps us in a mode to have to make these decisions. April 20th is the, obviously, the most significant deadline, if you will, that I'm being mindful of. And I like to present a budget to the board that the board's ultimately going to adopt. Obviously, we do have the ability between the 6th and the 20th to make further recommendations if we're receiving additional information. That needs to be factored in at that point, but to be determined. And we have our vote on, on May 18th. So at this point, if it's okay, I'll come back to the table just because I think there's questions or answers or discussion. Ann, it's behind me, Ann can come up to here and answer any questions on, on some of the other funding sources that we may have.
Well, that's tough to hear, huh?
What'd you say?
So that's tough to hear, all that doom and gloom.
I don't have any questions, but I just like, it's interesting, like, you see the value for like having people be in the community for the long time and, I don't know, I mean, just two things really quickly. Like, I've seen the transition of the administrative structure, K-12 change repeatedly. I think we got to where we are for really good reasons. So, I mean, just for folks that don't know, like, we've had all these different structures. I think Mary Ann's presentation tonight is a really nice illustration of why we are where we are. That's my comment. Then the other thing, and this is just kind of anecdotal, like, when Pete and John, when my son, who's now 24, and Margaret's son, who's now 24, were in elementary school, class size was 21, 22. And I thought it was, and I personally thought it was really small, but, you know, it's just, it's just, I'm just, I don't have any huge, I guess the administrative point is probably a point I'm, I'm making, but it's just, it's just how things change. I hadn't really realized how much class, you know, how much our school had really reduced until I thought back and I was like, oh yeah, Pete and John were always in a class that was 21, 22, 23 kids, you know? But that's almost 20 years, you know, that's 15 years ago. Yeah.
Oh, I've got questions. All right, let's roll. So a couple of things. I just want to clarify what I think I heard from you. Can you go back to the?
I got it here.
Oh, can you go back to the slide that lists all? Yes. This is what I think I heard because you said you were going to note places where it had an explicit impact. So this is what I think I heard. I think I heard that, I'm going to set aside the administration chunk, but that the support staff, aides and TAs, one elementary school teaching staff, the special education teaching staff, the secondary teacher were doable without significant impact to program a student.
For the most part. I think I had one caveat on the secondary teacher, two actually. One, if it was a high school position, it very well may impact an elective.
Okay, okay. Depending on the, okay.
Depending on which department it came out of. Because the majority of our secondary teachers are, have an elective that they teach.
Yep.
If it was at the middle school level, it would likely impact a team structure.
Yes, I heard that.
And so, again, it won't impact class size.
Right.
Generally, but it would impact the way our teams are configured, which I would qualify has an impact on, on kids. And some of those impacts, again, it's, it's a matter of perception, whether it's more direct or not. But certainly, the team structure is a good model and it would have an impact on that. There still would be a team. It would just go into a modified team.
In the middle school.
Yeah. So you have a teacher who would float between two teams. And at the, at the high school, it would impact an elective. But the rest of what you said, I, one elementary position.
Yes.
Yep. Putting the support staff as we know it right now.
Yes.
And then the special education teaching staff as we know it right now. That being the most speculative.
Yeah.
I mean, whatever it means. Yeah, we don't think that that will impact the, what our kids experience is, are right now into next year.
Okay, so I'll, I'll start with that as a, going from, oh my God, to, okay, the actual impacts of these are not as significant as you would read on paper. That's what my, my takeaway from that was.
Putting aside the admin piece, which, you know, I think.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, I'm going to put that aside directly. I did have a, my other question sort of thematically was, when I looked at this initially, I feel, immediate conversations being set aside, I felt that all of these have direct student contact and touch in one way, shape or form.
Sure.
And so my question was, is there, not to look at Tim, but I'll look at Tim a little bit, like, there are other parts of, where we spend money, are there opportunities? And was that, how, to what extent was that considered?
Greatly. I think those are areas that we've looked to in the past to reduce and we've reduced as much as we can.
For years. I think that, I just want to, to go think about historically, like, if, for years, I mean, going back to when Dr. Bowers has been here, we've been looking every year to not get to this point. There's been finding efficiencies, finding efficiencies, finding efficiencies, finding efficiencies. I think it's, it's really important to place this in that context where I, I do think that's, that's happened. I'm sure that's what you were going to say, but.
Yep, so.
I'm saying it more passionately than you would have said it.
No, but it's important to have a thread and, you know, you're the thread and some of you are the threads, if you will, to the conversations that have occurred in the past. And, but just looking back, as we do have artifacts of such, and Ann's a good thread as well because she's developed a bunch of budgets for us over the last 10 years. We've cut in maintenance and operation to the point where we, I don't believe we can cut anymore while still maintain a safe campus environment and a campus that looks good and that the community accesses in a variety of ways throughout the course of, of the year. And keep in mind that we do have some open positions right now that we haven't hired for, again, with the prospect of, of repositioning those for HR. That was the last of it. And so obviously, we could make do without those positions because we've already said we're going to reposition them for HR, but we couldn't go any further than that. And yeah, so, but I appreciate the question. That's where most districts will look at and we have as well. What's supporting the school more so than supporting the student? Let's look at that first and how could we become more efficient?
Yeah, that's helpful background.
I just wanted to reiterate that, that exactly what Peggy said is that for many years, we have been, I think Ann uses the, you know, you can only get so much blood from a stone and then there's no more there. And we've certainly all had these conversations about how teaching staff and staff that has contact with students is the absolute last thing we want to touch. And I do feel like, you know, every year, we are reminded by Ann typically or by the superintendent that, okay, we're, we're getting away with it this year, we're, we're not going to have to cut his teaching staff, but it's coming. And they're right. And here, you know, here we are. But it sounds to me like Dr. Benante and his team have, you know, they, he's presenting this not as a recommendation, but he's presenting the possibilities, knowing that this is not ideal and it's, it's doing as little harm as possible, I'm assuming, in his, not his recommendation, but his brainstorming.
Which is, which is a trigger for a longer and not a, a more interesting conversation, a more challenging conversation, which is, if this is the, if the, if the next step in any down year is teacher-staff challenge, like, what do we do about that longer term? We've had these conversations in different ways, shapes or forms. I am hopeful in some way that, if I remember correctly, on the enrollment study, has a continued decrease in one way, shape or form in the population enrollment and it's been going down for the past five years. And at some point in the 2000s, it was up at 900 some, and now we're below 800, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
So that balance of class size and teacher, required teachers to, to maintain the Hal Dane class size.
Yeah, so I would, I think that's a great point of reference. When we look at where we were in 2010, which one of those charts is elementary in 2010, right around that time, we were, we had about 900 students. If not north of that. And now we're, we're coming in right at 800 and likely to have fewer than 800. So when you have 100 fewer students in your system, there's a few, a few ways to approach that. If your funding streams are consistent or growing, you can look at really expanding program and that's what, it's a good opportunity to do. Maybe there's a program you've always wanted to run and now you have the ability to free up staff to do it. But once you get to a point where you feel like you're, you've covered certainly the basics and, you know, we're an exceptional school in many ways, so I feel we go well beyond the basics and should. But if your population continues to decrease, at some point, you have to make a proportional reduction in staff, especially if your funding or your revenue streams are static or, some districts experience, decreasing. And, and we have right now a situation where our, our levy always runs the potential of being lower than what our internal costs are growing at, when you get into contractual increases and such. The Garrison tuition's a good example of, you know, your, your, we, we include it on revenue and it's a significant revenue stream, but it's dependent on, there's an assumption that's made that a certain number of kids are going to come in each year and there's no guarantee that they will in any year. So you just, we have to be mindful of those potential limitations to how we budget. Or we have to occasionally, you know, periodically say, okay, we don't need to operate at this level anymore. And it's not always going to line up with attrition. So like, perfect scenario is the elementary right now. It lines up really well. I think I've illustrated, you know, class sizes could be exactly what they are right now with one less section and we had a teacher retire. Doesn't impact staff, doesn't impact our class size, we're in a good place. It doesn't, you know, it's feeling neutral, right? Because no one's impacted. And, you know, that's one that we haven't really talked about, but it will likely be in my recommended budget because it's minimal if, if, if any impact. But there's going to be years where we, and this may be one, where we have to make a reduction that doesn't line up with attrition. And, and it's tough in a small community, I would tell you, because there's so much of an attachment for a good reason to the people who work in our schools. And, and I appreciate that. That's the great thing about working in Hal Dane, but, you know, that just may be a reality that we're facing sooner rather than later. I know there's other questions, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Dr. Benante, can you talk a little bit about, I personally appreciate that in your non-recommendation, that in your non-recommendation, there are no cuts to extracurriculars or athletics, with the exception of chess club, which I don't fully understand unless kids just aren't accessing it.
Right.
But you've, I feel like you made a concerted effort to not include athletics or extracurriculars.
I did.
So can you just speak a little bit about that?
Well, yes, I, it was not part of my direction to, to our staff or to our admin team. And I felt from a, from starting, a, a, a starting point, that those are programs, activities that our kids are very passionate about and that to go as far, not that they're not about the staff that they work with each day, but that, and typically, the costs that are associated with such are modest in comparison to whatever your deficit may be. So why go there at this point in, in knowing that it's going to elicit a really strong reaction on the part of our kids and their families and anybody who's associated with our arts programs or our athletics programs and everything and anything in between for something that in reality, isn't really going to get us that close anyway to resolving our, our budget deficit. So I know they've been discussed in the past, I've seen those presentations, I just didn't feel it was necessary to go there. It was almost, the situation was so dire, you had to look even beyond the, the typical things that, that, that you look to, that are negligible in terms of cost, but really impactful by way of how our kids interact in those environments. So I'm not putting any of them in there and they, they won't be in my, my recommended budget either unless the board directs me to.
I, I appreciate that you said a strong reaction because, you know, I look at, when I, my first takeaway from looking at it, at the, some of the proposals here was, my takeaway was, oh, it seems like this disproportionately affects our students with IEPs or 504s.
Right.
Just the narrative, just looking at.
Absolutely, yeah.
In, in actuality, you know, it's, it's much, you know, it's, a careful reading would indicate otherwise. But the disadvantage for our students with IEPs and 504s is they don't speak as one voice. They don't come together.
Right.
Like the cohort that, you know, in athletics. So it's difficult to organize and understand what's going on here. So my concern in reading it and communicating about it is that we're very clear in communicating any anticipated cuts that, that we're already discussing. The budget deficit and its connection to services is, from my point of view, very problematic, even though they're going to be, it's going to be ongoing, but it does begin the conversation in the community that if I come into my, my CSE or CSP meeting and I'm looking for support and I know there is a mandate or I, my belief is there's a mandate that I'm going to have limited services, it's very easy for me to C, go A to B to C and go, well, the reason I'm not getting these hours that I thought I was going to get of PT or OT, et cetera, is because there's a mandate that those hours are no longer available.
Right.
You know what I mean? So that, I, I find the, the potential to take away from this to be, you know, traumatizing for some folks, you know what I mean?
Sure.
So I would, I would just like, as we, as we communicate about it, to just do so with care and sort of speak to each of those individuals.
Sure.
The way we're supposed to.
I think it's an important part, Sean, and I'm glad, I appreciate your candor. And anybody who would be accessing information on the budget, I, I would encourage them, you have to watch the presentations, you can't just read the slides, you know? Because there's a narrative to it. And the narrative's not in the slide deck. The narrative's what's, what I'm saying.
Right.
Or what Ann's saying or what any other of our administrators would say. You also bring up a really good point and it comes up here considerably about needs and needs that are at times qualified in such a way by group or by school. And, and that's tough, you know, I, I, and I will say that it's, it's a strong, there are strong voices and I'm, I appreciate it because it's, it's from a place of advocacy and it helps our schools improve. It's, whenever you're challenging authority respectfully, I think it drives improvement and a new lens at which to look at things. But I do think as it relates to special education in particular, but really as, and as it relates to all programs, our administration's responsibility, ending with me certainly, or beginning with me, beginning and ending with me, there's a matter of ethics that has to be applied first and foremost. And when we talk about, and I've tried to appropriately, I hope you see, qualify the remarks tonight, that it's really difficult to plan around special education because of the way the annual review process sits within your budget development process. It doesn't line up and it, and it shouldn't. Because decisions that are made through the CSE process should not be driven by budget. They should be driven by what the team that's most directly connected to that child feels is appropriate for that child's program, the parents of which are a part of that, as well as the educators that are working with the student. And that's where those decisions lie. And I haven't seen anything here or experienced anything here that would suggest budget is influencing those decisions at any point. However, I will qualify that it's expensive and that I want to be mindful of, and we see this in communities sometimes where there has to be good internal processes that we're making decisions at that, in that process, whether it be the way attaching an aide to a program or a teaching assistant or the extent of special education that we're offering. Considering an out-of-district program, there just should be a process for making that decision. It shouldn't just be based on whatever perspective someone comes in with in a given day, on, on the school end or on the parent end. And that's what we're responsible for, just maintaining that there's integrity to the decision-making process, but budget doesn't drive it. It's the, the integrity of the process that should.
And I appreciate the clarification. I really do. I really do think that the more forward we can be about, you know, maintaining our, the better off we're going to be, because I do feel like a lot of individuals feel like they're in a position in which they have to haggle, or they have to barter where it feels very, it's just me and you across the table here and we are trying to work here, which obviously has nothing to do with the processes that are in place. Like I said, that's, that was my first very emotional response to this, which, you know, since then has actually diminished considerably over careful consideration and your presentation. Was, was that, you know? And, and, you know, as a, as a parent of a, a child who's, who is receiving services, it's very, I think, easy to get lost in the discourse of a bias towards scarcity, let's put it that way. So, and it's difficult to endeavor to know that, you know, there is bounty in one way or another and we have to look for it and unpack it, and what does that mean, it's going to differ from individual to individual. But, I mean, that's why, you know, that, that's where that advocacy comes from in one way or another for many people in the, in the district, because of that, it's, everything feels so scarce and I'm desperate for the resources that I can get. So I appreciate that clarification.
No, thank you.
I, I did have a question about, also about the Garrison tuition, how does it, how does it compare to the O'Neill, what, what are they paying to, to O'Neill?
The Seneca Falls rate.
They are doing the Seneca Falls.
Yep, so that, and that was something I really appreciate, Carl and I had a great conversation, just kind of understanding the dynamics of such. And, you know, that's something I, I had heard here, you know, over the last couple of years, that question of, well, what does O'Neill pay? And not so genuinely as you've expressed it, but, but no, it's, it's a point of, I think skepticism, but they pay the Seneca Falls rate and Carl was pretty upfront about that and that's public information, so. And again, I, I don't know the dynamics behind why we ended up charging a reduced rate, but.
It doesn't matter. What matters is that it is on the path to recovery.
Special relationship, it's, yeah, it's fine. But it's their, now, the Seneca Falls rate will vary by each school. So I just want to, that's a state formula that factors in different components based on district. And so I think the Seneca Falls rate for O'Neill is a little lower than, than Haldane's, but it's, it's a, the formula is the same.
I have a question about the miscellaneous programs and the mention of summer school. My memory is that a couple of years ago, we enacted the summer school program because there was concern that more of our children were entering kindergarten or going into first grade without the necessary readiness skills. And so I realize it's a very small percentage of the reductions you're recommending, but I guess sort of my memory was that, is that, and so I was surprised to see it on here.
I think one thing for clarity, if the board would be willing, let me work with my team to further clarify the extent of the reductions. I'm afraid I wasn't as clear as I could have been on summer school, chess club, heart and homework help, just to narrow that down, because it's not necessarily inclusive of the entire program, it's just being more targeted with where the funding is. So I just want to, I want to make sure I'm, I have that fresh in mind too, obviously.
So I, so I, yeah, as a question that doesn't need to be. And I think it's probably a question that you'll get from the, not the summer school question, I don't think you'll get that from the public. I do expect you'll get the question about heart. I don't know much about homework help at the elementary school, but my perception is that heart is something that's really valued. And so I think just understanding, again, for, to be prepared to.
And I know unfortunately Julia couldn't be here this evening, but Julia will speak to that, that I'm not, she's definitely not recommending art in a few key areas, but in others she sees it as underutilized and that we can make a reduction to that, that those components of the program, but she could best explain it. But I'll, I'll make sure I have that information from our team and that it's provided in a way that the board is, it's easy for the board and any community member who are asking would understand.
I have a question for Anne. The, so if we take money from, if we don't keep as much money in the reserve fund, our credit rating goes down, right? If we were to, yes, is that correct? Okay, so if we were to take money out and our credit rating was to go down, how do we get the credit rating back up? Is it just about replenishing the reserves, or is there some sort of timeframe or process? Is it like, you know, you take 100 grand out and as long as you've got it put back in in a year, you're good, or?
Or is it like a bankruptcy?
Or is it a big problem and it takes five years to get it back?
Well, the recovery, if you deplete some of your reserves, the recovery of that, you know, if you're, if you're digging a hole and you're using those reserves in the budget, we've been fortunate that when we appropriate some reserves and some fund balance, we don't have to hit it, so we stay at, at a level. The danger is when you start actually using your reserves and your fund balance means that you're using more of your budget than is fiscally responsible. You might be at 97%. If you're spending 97% of your budget, it's unlikely that you're going to have fund balance at the end of the year to refund and replenish your reserves, so it does carry forward. If it was one year and you think next year you're going to have the revenue and you're going to replenish it, then I would be supportive of that. We don't get our bond rating every year. We did last year, we had a Moody's bond rating because we were refinancing. We'll probably have another one when we bond for the, the remainder of the capital project. I know there were some questions about that, the grid that was up there, about comparing us to other schools. It's not just one factor, it's not just fund balance and, oh, you're going to go down in your rating. It took 12 years to get to the level that we're at now. We were much lower than, building up healthy reserves takes time and that incorporated with the other parts of the financials take time. So if, just real quickly, I can point out some things on that, that slide that might be helpful. So if you're looking, when you look at this, red means that you're worse than the group and green means you're better than the group. So we want to look at, on Haldane, if we look at where we're in the red, we're in the red of our full value. It's unlikely that that's really going to increase because there's not a lot of building, land that you're going to, you can develop. This year, we had some increase to our tax base because of the Butterfield project, but there's not a lot of that that's even available to us. So AA3 is the highest that we'd be expected to reach in our bond rating. When we had the last, just a couple months ago, the fiscal advisor and I were really trying to get a feather in our cap to get to AA2. It would have been really a happy time for them, okay? So when we tried to get up to that category, this is what Moody's came back with to try to explain to us why we weren't getting AA2. One was our brick and mortar. The second part of it, and then if you look at that, then our argument was, well, look at Pauling, Pauling's in there and they have about the same tax base that we have. Said, yes, but go over to the right and their fund balance is very green. Their cash balances are in a very green zone. Cash balances are going to follow fund balance, because if you have money in the bank, your cash balances are going to go up. So we're not red, but we're orange. So if, we don't really have a hope that our tax base is going to increase up to more than, than the others, the re, the reserve part could push us into there. So, so that's basically why you're looking at, at this chart, to let you know that reserves do matter. And again, once you start getting into that zone where you're using your reserves and your fund balance to pay for things in your budget, then after a while, it's going to dry up.
Can I ask, so what's the, what's the, if we were in AA2 as opposed to AA3, what's the, the delta in cost of borrowing to move a rating category?
I don't have that information. I can reach out to the fiscal advisor and ask, you know, what would that have meant for us? But I know that going to AA3 got us about five, five lending institutions to bid on us, when we've, we've been used to one or two.
Okay, okay.
So it was, it was more competitive.
I get, sure, I guess the implication is that better bond rating, you will have, you'll be able to borrow at more competitive rates, which we certainly used this year to, you refinanced and then were able to pour that money back in, right? So that would be interesting to, because it's, it's good to have, should we need it? I'm just wondering at one point, what the actual cost differential there is compared to everything else. What was the other question? Do bands, do bands run on credit rating as well? I assume they do.
They do.
Yeah. So I'm not going to ask you all my questions, don't worry. My only, so I just want to make sure I'm, I'm running this the right way. When you think about the, the unappropriated 4%, if we flip back to whatever page it was, the revenue overview page. And then I've got a totally stupid question after this, so get ready for that one. That's, that's, like, okay, so if I think about the unappropriated 4%, does that show up on here anywhere?
No.
So it's not even on here?
It's not on there.
It's not part of our estimated revenue target budget?
Correct.
So it's, it sits as a cash reserve off?
It's unappropriated, unreserved. It's there for whatever the board decides that they want to spend it on, but the 4% is the cap at this time that we can have.
Okay. No, go, you go.
In your experience, has the district or a district, because I know the experience in others, ever taken a portion of its unappropriated fund balance and incorporated it as a revenue stream, a continued revenue stream? I know it's not, but just thinking of it that way. Knowing that at the end of each school year, instead of going back and refunding, or funding reserves, refund the unappropriated fund balance, and are you even allowed to do that, I guess?
Yes, that's, that's kind of what we're doing with the $645,000. That, if we cut that loose from the budget, it would increase our 4% to higher. That should be appropriated to another reserve. Because if you, if you did that and you paid it back, that's fine, but if you use it and then you can't pay it back, you're starting out that much deeper at the beginning of the next year.
So I, I could.
You keep going.
I'm sorry, it's your time, not mine.
I'm going down the same time.
I have Anne all day, so. Can you speak to the $645,000 again, and on the appropriated line? I know we've had conversations about this, it's just not clear in my mind. You said it's kind of what we're doing already, I, I just want to, can you clarify or talk more about that, I guess?
At the end of the year, when we have excess revenues over expenditures, that's money that would increase our fund balance. So we subtract from that the 4%, we subtract what we've appropriated, and any money left over, you can decide which reserve that you, or reserves that you want to fund. So the appropriated fund balance at one point had gone up to $725,000. There was at some point in the last 12 years that that was as high as that. It started out at 250. It was 250,000. We needed to care, to carry through because nothing, nobody wanted to cut anything, or there wasn't anything to cut, I'm not going to say nobody wanted to, but that was the decision that was made. So it went up to 645. One year it went to 725 and luckily there was some funding the following year, so we could drop that, because it just can't keep getting bigger and bigger, because then you're going to really start using it. So we do have the extra, in the budget appropriations, there's that room, because it would just be, it would be so bad to just budget 100% and think that you're never going to have a variance. Last year, or actually this year, that appropriated fund balance was 695. Not during budget time, but over the summer, when you gave $50,000 back to the taxpayer. That's, it's dropping back down to 645 because we spent that money, but we didn't use that 50,000 to increase the budget, you used it to lower another revenue, the taxes. So it just went, it shifted on the revenue side, it didn't increase both. So, yeah, you could, you could bring in the, you could bring in more of the 4% if you wanted to, but then there's that other, there's another chart that I developed that, I mean, if we need a magnifying lead.
I'm not even going to ask you about that, I'm going to have to go sit home and look at it.
Yeah, you're going to have to look at that one.
Okay, sort of an easy question and then a completely wacky question. The sort of easy question is, we've been fortunate over the past X years to be able to, at the end of the school year, have funds in excess of expenses. So we, 4%, which is a liable carryover, refill the 645, right, which, which I think we vote on, don't we vote on that as part of our reserve every year?
The 645 is part of the budget.
Is part of the budget, but it's appropriation, so don't we?
It's appropriated when the budget is voted on and, and that's where you, you're approving it to be part of the budget development.
And then we've got a chunk of change left over, which we end up flowing into your other restricted reserves. So capital repair, EBLR, retirement, all that sort of stuff.
Cafeteria deficit.
What?
Cafeteria deficit.
Yes, can't forget the cafeteria deficit. We've been super fortunate over the past X years that that transfer has been substantial, little less substantial this past year, but over the past number of years, it's been several hundred thousand dollars plus. That is money that we end up funding to, for future use, which it does get used, we certainly use repair reserve, we certainly use capital reserve, I know you use retirement reserve. However, that is money that we could repurpose in some way, shape or form. I guess my question would be, do you think that we are at the end of this year anticipating, after 4% set aside, after 645, that there will be some funds over expenses as we have had for the past couple of years?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not going to ask you how big. Okay, so here's my wacky question. So I guess that in use of either the 4% or 645, using them to fund ongoing concerns, I think is your dramatic expectation, that that is a bad idea because you're never going to replace it, because you're not going to have a revenue stream to come in, you don't anticipate a revenue stream to come in and replace it. Would you say that if you were to use it, it would be better to use it for a one-time, one-off expense, that you would not, that would not be recurring, therefore being able to refund that through this excess, excess funds in future years?
So if I understand you correctly, if you're going to inject some of the So if I understand you correctly, if you're going to inject some of the four percent.
Yep.
Appropriate more of that to your budget.
Yep.
I would recommend that that equal something on the expense side.
Yep.
That isn't going to be in the budget next year.
It's one time.
It's one time.
Okay.
But it's not, um, it, it shouldn't be, it should be very clearly designated.
Yep, okay.
Because I know that what's happened in the past, which is, um, some of, of the reason why we're having hard conversations now, is that, for instance, one year we were low on, um, we had reduced special ed costs. In my mind, that should have gone into a special ed reserve, but they haven't let us create it yet.
Right, yep.
Instead, items were created in the budget that were ongoing operating costs. So we used one-time revenue to create
Ongoing.
A stream of, at some point, unsustainable expenditures.
Okay. All right, here's my, here's my wacky question. Can Haldane District unilaterally offer teacher retirement incentives?
So, um, it's a good question. It's a timely one as well, um, for a reason I wanna make sure I circle back to. We can off, so the teachers retire from Haldane, yes, or teaching assistants who remain in the operation staff, but they ought to be eligible to retire within the state system. So there's certain eligibility requirements, right? We can offer an incentive for consideration, but we are limited, I would say, in comparison to what the state could offer.
Okay.
Which could be very, um, I would say lucrative, um, but very appealing.
Financially.
Too. So let me give you an example in this, uh, in the current, um, discussion at the state level, there is discussion of a retirement incentive. One of which was proposed was to allow eligible teachers with, who are at twenty-five years of service and fifty years of age, the opportunity to retire from TRS. That's five years earlier than they would normally be eligible, uh, because you're typically eligible at fifty-five. I would say that's very appealing.
Yeah.
As compared, we could not offer that because they're not retired, we don't control who retires from the TRS system. So they'd be eligible to draw a pension at a particular rate, be a reduced rate. But, um, be five years earlier than they typically would be. That's the kind of incentive that I think would really, um, be of appeal. The best I, we could do, um, is to offer, you know, some sort of financial incentive.
Right.
But, you know, we're not a big district that has, you know, this pile of cash, you know, to, uh, to put out there necessarily. But, uh, what, something Ann and I have discussed is, are there other, um, structures, uh, to a contract that we could potentially put together? And, um, we began a discussion with the Teachers Association that, um, we'd at least be interested in mutually exploring. What, what would that be? That may be of appeal, uh, to our employees who, who are eligible. But the most important piece, uh, regardless of any potential changes at the state level, they need to be eligible.
Yeah.
Within the system. We see on paper, you know, several, many, who are eligible, um, one way or the other. It's just what would be of, what is the incentive for them that they would, um, maybe pursue it?
Thank you.
I wanna come back to a point I made, I think, either last meeting or the meeting before last. So I super appreciate all the complicated questions that John asks, because I think it rises up a lot of questions that the public may have, and I, I think it really helps us all be better, you know, better informed and educated. But I wanna come back to this point which I made recently, which is, I don't think it's wise for us to think about this as a special year. Like, I don't think, it's special in that, yes, it's one point eight instead of two point oh three. But as we spoke about at the beginning, for the last, as long as I've been on the board, and it had happened before then, we have every year, because costs in terms of salaries, in terms of benefits, in terms of other things, are growing at a much higher rate than what we're allowed to raise taxes by. We've, we've, we've reduced and we've reduced and we've reduced, and I think that this trend, we may have, you know, you know, it, it could be better or worse in some years, but we're gonna continue to, to face this. And I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think this is a really, I don't think this is a special year. So that, that's, you know, I mean, I don't think.
No, there's structural issues.
Yeah, no, and I do really appreciate that you're bringing up these questions that folks must have, like, what about this and what about that? And I think it's so good to get all of it out there. But I just feel like, I, you know, I don't know, we knew we would get to a, it's, it's super, super unfortunate. But I think we, we were concerned that we were gonna get it at this place. And I, I, I hope it's not like this in the, in the coming years, but I, I do, I do think we have to be really mindful of that.
Yeah, and but just to the same note, it would be nice if we needed to make, and it sounds like we do, uh, need to face the music on some structural changes. And it would be
Totally.
Nice to do that, you know, with some time and without, um, sort of like a frantic pressured situation, which we are currently under. From my perspective, it would be really, um, much better to start having these, like, financial, structural conversations that revolve around class size, that revolve around, um, vision, that revolve around teacher contracts, that revenue streams, um, from a place that's not so frantic and traumatic. It's hard to have those kind of long-term conversations when we have, you know, a month before the budgets due.
And especially after such a really hard
Yeah.
Year, you know?
So, just not saying, not saying that there's a way to, just, just saying.
I have another question. What is the impact of losing the title Dean of Students?
Oh, um, no, thank you, and you may have, you may have caught that. So in that illustration, and I'm sorry, Margaret, I didn't, I didn't speak to that, but I, I did want to, oop, yeah. In our previous model, again, we've been somewhat under, uh, an environment where we did not have a middle school. Before, we were configured differently. I, I would recommend that if we were to at all consider that, not that I'm recommending we consider that, but if we were, that we consider, um, the athletic director serving as an assistant principal. So there could be a defined level of support to that particular level, whatever it may be, or building, whatever it may be, depending on how that configuration worked out, as opposed to a dean. I think it formalizes, uh, their connection, uh, to the building a little bit more. I do think it would cost us more money because there would be increased responsibility, uh, that comes with it, but not at the level that we would have to fund. There would still be a reduction in total cost because you'd be eliminating the principal position. And, uh, so, uh, you asked the implications of doing it?
Right, because isn't the Dean of Students title throughout the policy and the code of conduct? And if something went wrong, the Dean of Students is the one that, that is part of that committee that, that.
Uh, it very well may be, and it would necessitate that we go back and revise, uh, policies and codes of conduct, wherever, um, that title was listed.
So then the, so it's all over it, right?
It is.
So do you just give it to someone else? Do you give the title to someone else, or do you change the policies to, to reflect
Your current staffing.
Some other title?
And we find this coming up, uh, in our policy review now, because we've changed titles. We had a Director of Student Support, or Student Support Specialist at one point. We've had a Director of Special Education at one point, and now we have a Director of People Personnel Services. So as we've gone through policy review, uh, we've had to change those titles. But if it were, first of all, when we bring such individuals in or retitle a position or reclass, uh, retitle a position, there is a, there's, you're endorsing that person as a, to fulfill the roles and the responsibilities that are cha- attached to their job description. So if there's a policy, uh, that has a different title name, and that policy were to come to be questioned, it does not necessarily create, uh, uh, an issue for the district because you've, you've endorsed someone, you've hired somebody with the role and the responsibilities outlined in their, in their job description. So we should clean up the language as we go along, but it doesn't, uh, in any way limit their ability to carry out the functions that are associated with their title.
No, but I'm saying if, if we don't have anybody that has that title, who is gonna fill those roles in the, in the, if something? And it's when the students, if someone.
An assistant principal can fulfill all the responsibilities of a Dean of Students.
Got it, okay.
I think that is accurate. Similar to, by the way, a teaching assistant can fulfill all of the responsibilities of a teacher aide.
If, if it had to be that change of the thing.
Correct.
Okay.
So you have certain titles that are inclusive of a title that may fall underneath it?
I think a lot of them are disciplinary. That's why I'm questioning it.
And it's not unusual for an AP, an assistant principal, to fulfill all the disciplinary responsibilities. In my previous district, we didn't have deans. We only had assistant principals, and they did all the dis. But they could do other things.
Right.
That's why we wanted the AP instead of the dean title.
Right.
A little more versatile.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Do we feel like we have enough information for the moment?
Saturation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, it's, uh, communication from the public time, if anybody's still awake. And I'm gonna just read this, a little statement here as we start to have more people joining our meeting. The Haldane Board of Education desires and values input from the entire school community. For those who wish to address the board, please sign in and state your name for the record. Ms. Platt keeps an ongoing list by her at the end of the table. Please keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Disparaging remarks and discussion of district personnel are prohibited. And although we do not engage in dialogue, we are listening. Please leave your contact information with our district clerk for prompt follow-up from the board president or superintendent. Is there any communication from the public at this time? Okay, information reports. Mr. Donahue. Good, because the.
You're killing me here, come on.
House of Hope donation drive is up and running, and has been since the beginning of the month, and will be running until spring break. So that's really good. It's, um, for those of you that don't know, the House of Hope is a domestic violence shelter up in Fishkill. And additionally, seniors and juniors have been working with senior citizens to get COVID-19 vaccine shots through Drug World Pharmacy. Great way to get community service hours and great way to help the community. And, um, a prom committee has formed and has begun preliminary planning for a possible prom, uh, prom, sorry, in the, in, uh, June. And, uh, they've been working in accordance with class advisors and the student council, and, um, of course, with respect to COVID-19 protocols.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Jamin.
I'm gonna briefly highlight a couple of, uh, exciting things that have been going on at the elementary. As Dr. Benante mentioned, we welcomed back all but a few of our students, um, yesterday. Yesterday was Monday, um, which is just very exciting. So we have between fifteen and twenty that are still out, um, some due to quarantine and things like that. But, uh, we're getting close to all being back, which is exciting. And we did three interactive presentations with various places over the last two weeks, which has just been really exciting. Our fourth graders presented their biomimicry projects to the Biomimicry Institute, and three of their, um, members came and listened to the presentations and gave feedback to the students on their project designs. Our fifth graders wrote a graphic novel, um, each section wrote a different graphic novel on space, and they presented those to classes from other districts who listened and, um, had to take a quiz on space facts after listening to the graphic novel and viewing the pictures, and did quite well, which shows us that their information was accurate and presented well. And then our, all of our second graders, one of our first graders and one of our fifth grade classes, got to meet for those Zoom calls related to Black History Month at the beginning of the month, following their research on black artists and, um, performers. So it has been an exciting couple of weeks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Niffen is not here, but her, oh, sure.
Yep, I just want, I have Julia's report, and, uh, again, I know Julia, um, sends her regrets for not being able to make it this evening. Julia just wanted to, included in her report, I'm gonna highlight, uh, two things. The first of which is just, uh, I wanna underscore what Doug had shared about the seniors helping seniors get vaccine appointments. So that's been in the news, the issue that some of our, uh, seniors in the community have, uh, accessing the online system that's largely utilized to access appointments. And Julia just had noted that, uh, up to this point, uh, up to twenty-five seniors, senior citizens have been able to, uh, get appointments by way of this, which I think is, is an outstanding connection to our community. And as you may have, uh, heard in the past, Julia referenced the Facing History in Ourselves work at the high school. We had to reschedule, uh, the last professional development session. I think we were dismissed early that day, or some other weather-related event had come up. But it's, uh, upcoming later this week, and there are four components of that work. The first is the social, emotional, uh, academic development framework that Facing History utilizes for teachers to, uh, develop, uh, particular, uh, lesson planning with their kids. Another, uh, component that's associated with student identity and affirming student identities within the classroom environment, included, inclusive of reflective, uh, classroom, uh, practices. And the last piece, uh, a step into history, using Facing History's approach, teachers will explore Ernest Green's account of graduating from Little Rock High School, which I thought was, uh, really compelling and, and an interesting component of their, uh, plans for later this week.
Great, thank you. Uh, Dr. Silke.
I've highlighted most of the information from the report that you have, but I'm going to give you a sneak peek into next month's, um, board report. We have, um, our third meeting with, between the sixth grade and the Learning Differences Committee to plan Learning Differences Week, that is likely to be based around the documentary Crip Camp, which covers the, uh, the process of students with physical, campers with physical disabilities being included in a camp in the nineteen seventies for the first time, and became the underpinning work for, uh, much of the ADA, um, acts that followed. So more to come on that. I'm very excited to say that our ELA department will be participating in the middle school-level Young Authors colloquium this year. That is run through PNW BOCES. It's a region, it's a regional, um, event where students from multiple districts come together. They spend the day writing and reading and participating in workshops that are designed by their teachers. So it's a nice regional opportunity, and there was question about whether or not it would happen on the middle level this year because of COVID, and it is moving forward. So, um, our students will be participating in that, so more to come on that. And also April's National Poetry Month, and our students are busily writing poetry. And, um, more to come on how they're recognized, uh, in their efforts there as well.
Thank you. Ms. Rounds.
Good evening. Uh, earlier in the year, I discussed, uh, the goal to expand our dialectical behavior therapy program in the school. And I just wanted to give the board an update that we have extended the program down to our kindergarten level. And Mrs. Curry just finished her first, uh, seven-week pilot group with these students. And our kindergarteners learned about mindfulness, they learned about managing strong emotions, and about friendship skills. And I just wanted to provide a little bit of feedback, um, from the kindergarten teacher. She said that given an outlet to talk through small problems, to develop communication skills around their social, emotional, and well-being, and to get, uh, I'm sorry, that children were given an outlet to talk through small problems, to develop communication skills around their social, emotional well-being, and to get to know a class friend more deeply. And parents said that their child, um, was more in touch with their feelings and has become quite good at expressing herself when she has a complex emotion. and has become quite good at expressing herself when she has a complex emotion. And from another parent, that the child is loving the classes and is happy they are part of the classes. So we hope to continue to expand that to the other kindergarten classes. And perhaps Mrs. Curry is thinking about doing this more as a whole group push-in program for the classes next year, for the kindergarten classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh?
Good evening. In addition to the typical work that we conduct over the past few weeks of cleaning, disinfecting, and general maintenance, we've done a lot of planning work. We find ourselves in the middle of seasons, that transition period between spring and winter, where we're still hesitant to put away the, the snow removal equipment. And the past few days have proven that. But we're looking forward to the spring. This time last year, we were in a remote capacity and were for the majority of the spring. So a lot of the work that we have planned typically wasn't able to be completed. So we're starting to order those materials, and we really have a significant worklist ahead of us as we head into spring break and the remainder of the spring. In terms of capital construction, we are still awaiting SED approval for the electrical mechanical aspect project that is up at the state. That was submitted in December. Original estimates from the state was six to eight weeks of approval. We're beyond that period and now. In speaking with Fuller and D'Angelo, the district architects, any of the projects that they have put up to the state are still in the same status. So there's been no movement out of the state, and it's unclear as to what the delay is or when that will alleviate itself. We're starting to look at if, how far we can go in the delay process with the bidding times and lead time of any materials, what we'd be able to accomplish over the summer for that electrical mechanical phase. We're not there yet where we wouldn't be able to do that work, but we're starting to, to look at those timeframes. And we'll keep you posted as the state hopefully comes through with, with their approvals. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going into consent agenda minutes, may I have a motion, please? These are the minutes from our March 2 meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Our committee minutes are here for everyone to review. Going into consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going into our unfinished business with our school calendar. Ms. Platt, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby adopts the 2021-2022 Haldane School District Calendar as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Did you second?
I did. It was quiet, but
Okay, thank you. I heard him.
I'm very enthusiastic. Don't worry.
I heard him.
Is there any discussion about the school calendar? All those in favor?
Aye.
CSE, CPSE recommendations. Ms. Platt?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Platt, you do not need to read this whole thing. This is our annual meeting notice. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Platt.
Yes, and I just want to remind you it needs a roll call vote.
Thank you.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the resolution to include Proposition 2 in the notice of the annual district meeting on May 18, 2021.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
President Daley?
Yes.
Vice President Hedlund?
Yes.
Trustee Clements?
Yes.
Trustee McNaul?
Yes.
Trustee Parr?
Yes.
Okay, another meeting proposition trustee election setup.
Yes, and another roll call vote.
Yes.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the resolution calling for the annual district meeting and trustee election on May 18, 2021.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
President Daley? Yes. Vice President Hedlund?
Yes.
Trustee Clements?
Yes.
Trustee McNaul?
Yes.
Trustee Parr?
Yes.
Is there any communication from the public at this time? Okay, board committee reports, policy committee update. Peggy, do you have anything to say?
Same places where we've been for a while.
Holding, holding steady.
Holding steady, waiting for the
Awaiting our policy return.
Draft three.
Yep. Westchester-Putnam update, I was at an advocacy meeting last night, and we spoke all about what Dr. Benante talked about a bit in his presentation, which is where we are at with the budget from the state. And as Dr. Benante mentioned, the governor has given his executive proposal. The Senate and the Assembly have given their retort, which is this incredible generous wish list for education. And we thank them for their advocacy on our behalf because they're really doing important work. And now we await the retort from the governor's office. And we hope that it's favorable. And that's where we're at. Are there any board reflections to share?
Only that we had to make an appointment to do high school, like, what are you going to do with the rest of your life? Meeting for the first time, it scared the crap out of me. Good stuff.
Yeah. Dr. Benante, do you have any final thoughts?
No thoughts, and thank you for your time this evening, everyone for their
Can anybody still make a coherent sentence? Are we all ready to go to sleep?
Well, I guess, I guess my, my reflections, I mean, I really, I mean, it goes without saying. I mean, I really appreciate how really thoughtful, you know, the, the presentation was. I was, I don't know, it was, it was really clear, it was really helpful. I think it's provided the community with really important information that they need going forward for these other, and, and it was, yeah. That was great.
I echo that. And I told you, I, I lost a considerable amount of sleep over the weekend thinking about it. Mostly thinking like, all the conversations we need to have after tonight, like, I will be engaged in. But I, again, I know that no one has lost as much sleep over this as you have, and I really appreciate
Sean told me how much sleep he lost, but with the caveat that I'm sure it's not as much as you've lost.
And I appreciate, and
Thank you, Sean.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time, everybody.